Okay, good morning, everybody. It's eight thirty. Time to call the meeting of Tuesday, April twenty-second, two thousand fourteen to order. And our first item of business is to approve the agenda, and I see that we do have one agenda addition, which is the authorized county auditor treasure to execute contract with Optimum Solutions for Clay County to provide beta testing for PC version of human resources and payroll programs.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
At the same time. Nice one, now at the day. Motion carried. Okay, we'll move to citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard today on items that are not on the agenda? Any citizens to be heard on items not on the agenda? Final call. Any citizens to be heard on items not on the agenda? We'll move on. Minutes of April first and April eighth.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in the second on the minutes. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose the same. Motion carried. Moving right along. Approval of payments, intent of bills and vouchers, and we do have them here.
Motion to approve.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose the same. Motion carried. All right, eight thirty-five. We have our, I haven't signed the merger term, but we have our bid opening for the Family Service Center elevated renovation project. Brian, you gonna come over and lead us on this one? Oh, we gotta, um, we gotta wait a few minutes here, don't we?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Yeah, okay. You know, we've had good interest, I think, from the, just because of the other work that was being fired to a general contractor, which was generally, that's just the only one that's.
Yeah.
Well, yes, Brian. Mr. Chair, if you wouldn't want to, before we open the bid, we could talk a little bit about the financing aspect of it and things, because this is going to be a sizable expenditure.
All right. And. I always like to hear you say where the money's coming from.
Well, I'm not so sure I know.
You need help?
That's not good.
Well, yeah, we knew that the bid is, that is going to be opened here in a couple of minutes is going to be sizable, because it's for the two elevators over in the Family Service Center. Anytime you deal with elevators, it can be expensive. I do have some information here. In first, in fact, the first thing I'm gonna pass around is the, the balance, we'll call it, in Fund Nineteen, and it's labeled as such there on top. This is the capital improvement fund that we set up a few years ago, and we set aside a hundred thousand dollars in that fund each year. And one of the first large expenses that we did pay out of this fund is when we had that a hundred and eighty thousand dollars with the jail work that was done. That was not in the capital improvement project, the bonding project that we got approved. So, if you consider this year, this is just a short balance sheet, I should say, but if you consider this year, we'll put in five hundred thousand dollars, and we've paid out about two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars in different projects, because not, in addition to the jail shower project, we also had that project on the southern part of this court building that needed to be repaired, and that was not in the capital building project. Do you remember? There were certain stipulations, and that was spent before that. So, we've had expenditures out of that fund. But there would be a balance of about two hundred thousand dollars in Fund Nineteen.
Brian, can I interrupt you for a second?
You betcha.
So, the, the dollars that we're talking about here in terms of the deposits that have been made, I think that all goes back to when we, we got some funding from Solidways, wasn't it correct?
We did. We started assessing a hundred thousand dollars in administrative fees.
For administrative fees.
And then we moved a hundred thousand dollars into a capital building fund.
Yeah, but I mean, that was, we had some administrative fees that were worthy of us doing.
Yes.
Do these, do these funds get intermingled with the other bond dollars that we had that were part of the capital improvement project? Does it all under one lump sum now, those dollars?
No, Mr. Chair, it's not. That's why it's Fund Nineteen, and the others are Fund Thirty. And we're gonna talk a little bit about that as well.
Is the Fund Nineteen dollars, have those projects been listed in our capital improvement projects?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair, they hadn't. No. The, the Fund Thirty was the capital improvement dollars and the capital improvement plan that we had to put forward in order to get.
So, so that's where the dollars are going out for the motor vehicle department? They're coming out of Fund Thirty?
Fund Thirty, yes. Mm-hmm.
Okay, I just want, I didn't know if these were somehow intermingled or.
Well, that's a very good question, because they're gonna be intermingled a little bit, hopefully.
Well, but then that becomes my point, because if they do become intermingled, shouldn't all those projects then have to be listed on the capital improvement project list that was adopted and passed to allow us to do that?
Right.
So, if we do intermingle, then we need.
No, no, Mr. Chair. What we're going to do is we're gonna expend capital, the, the bonding fund, that's the.
Yes.
Fund Thirty.
Yep.
We're gonna expend that completely first. And then we feel we will need some dollars from the capital fund, Fund Nineteen, in order to finish that project, meaning the parking lot and things.
Okay.
So, that's why I bring you up to kind of date on the, on the elevator.
I'll follow your lead.
Well, and, and I will give Lori credit for this suggestion, 'cause I think it's a good one. When we do look at the elevators and replacing that in the Family Service Center, if you remember, right, we made our last payment last year on the debt services in the Family Service Center, and we feel that with the new roof that we've put on that building, we put in three hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of windows out of the capital improvement fund, that that building should be in pretty sound shape. It does generate a lot of revenue, and we feel that that should be probably looked at as closely as possible for an enterprise project of self-sustainability, and I think that's how you folks looked at it when you went into that. So, what, what Lori is suggesting, if you choose to go forward with replacing the elevators, is that that would be charged to the Family Service Center building. And then, at the end of the year, if we need to take some funds from Fund Nineteen, the capital fund project to transfer to balance that out, then we could do that. And it would be a capital fund project. But again, Fund Nineteen is not the one that we laid out the capital plan that has to meet those things. That's, that's for other capital projects.
But the Fund Nineteen, with the remaining balance right now of approximately two hundred and one thousand is available for the elevator project.
Um, well, it is if you wish it to be, but here, here's the problem. We are going to expand fund, total funds out of Fund Thirty for the motor vehicle.
Okay.
We were hoping to use some of the funds out of Fund Nineteen for the, for the parking lot project and things.
Over there.
Over there, at Motor Vehicle. Right. Because we feel that is a capital fund project.
Yep.
And we'd like to probably then separate the elevator issue for the Family Service Center and keep that in the Family Service Fund.
Okay.
Is what we'd like to do.
Okay. I'm still asking you to show me the money.
Okay. Now, should we see what the money looks like?
John sees it.
Okay, okay. Well, Mr. Chair, I, if I.
Why don't we, we, yep, we, do we have the bids here?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, we have received one, one.
And for the record, why don't you tell us who you are again?
I'm Michael Burns, architect.
Nice to see you again, Mike.
Nice to be here. Thank you. Uh, we have gotten one bid from Gas Construction. We've had lots of interest from the elevator companies, so Gas would be general contractor on the project. We have a five percent bid bond from them. That's in compliance. They've made note that they've received the addenda on the outside of the envelope containing the bid.
Mr. Chair, there was only one addendum, correct?
No, there were three.
Oh, there were three?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we've got, yeah, an acknowledgement of all three addenda on the bid form. So, that's good. Okay. We've got a base bid of three hundred seventy-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. And their elevator subcontractor is ThyssenKrupp. That's T-H-Y-S-S-E-N-K-R-U-P-P. In addition, it looks to me like they've also submitted a voluntary alternate for, which includes to keep, keeping the existing hoist machine and replacing the hoist motor, rather than, I believe, replacing both elements. But that would be a deduct of forty-four thousand, one hundred seventy-nine dollars. And I think we'd wanna just discuss that particular item a bit more before we make a recommendation on that particular thing.
Could you, could you explain to us the, the area, this piece of equipment that they're talking about as an alternative keeping? What's, what's the value of, or what's the, what's the life of that, and would that just lead to sooner problems with that?
Um, you know, I, I don't honestly know exactly the specifics in regard to that question. The, when it comes to elevator equipment, it's so specific that we often rely on the elevator vendors to fill us in or bring us up to data exactly on what things need to be done and why they need to be done. We've had a number of conversations with the regional state elevator inspector as well. So, that's one of the things that I just wanna make sure that if, if the county were to accept this deduct, for instance, that the elevator inspector is going to be fine with it, because whatever he says, you know, we basically have to do.
Right. It's not, it's not like that, but, you know, I mean, it might, it might meet approval now, but, you know, if we're, if we're upgrading everything else to new and you've got one old piece there, at what point are you just gonna be back to the same old issue?
Yeah, and, and.
You know, for, I mean, forty-four thousand dollars, a lot of money to save if you can save it, but.
Yeah, but you make a good point, because you're already spending over three hundred thousand to fix and upgrade completely the elevator systems, and to retain the existing motor and the, the machine might not be such a, a good deal in the, in the long run.
Do the, do we, does it change the, I mean, what you call it, the thing you write in the pot cam, or is it, that's the same, it's just a.
Right.
Mechanism underneath it.
Yeah, most of this is all new digital equipment, new mechanics, and some of the operational elements within the elevator, like the ropes that you, are used to lower and raise the, the cab itself. I don't know how familiar you are with some of the problems that they've been encountering, but the one, the east elevator has been known to stop while in the process of going between floors, so. And I, I, last time I wrote it, there were about five or six of us in there, and it was herky-jerky as you went up. So, you know, it's an indication that the equipment is wearing out.
Right. What, what was our estimate?
About three hundred and thirty.
Yeah.
Is it normal to only get one bid for these kind of things?
Um, I, that I can't answer really. We actually, I think, thought that maybe the elevator companies themselves would just be the bidders, but there were some additional issues that made it a little more complicated for them. Most of the time, elevator companies are always subcontractors to general contractors, so the general contractors take care of all the primary mobilization issues, the insurance, the bonds. It's not that the elevator companies, I don't think, are, aren't capable of carrying and doing that kind of thing, but they're more comfortable if they just act as a subcontractor and do only their specific scope of work, rather than handle all the administrative things. So, honestly, I don't know why we only had one general contractor, but we did check around and.
So, we're slightly over ten percent here. Overestimate, aren't we?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, this is, does come in, you know, we were hoping it'd be less than three hundred thousand dollars for this project, and I don't know if there's some, I don't wanna say negotiations, but we knew it would be a limited field, because there's probably two elevator companies that service this area. And, and it, it, it really kind of chokes the market and holds us a little bit.
I don't suppose we had the insight to put any money in internal service account to, what, thirty years ago?
Well, I guess, and, and we certainly don't have to make that decision, and we can come back with maybe a better answer for it, but that's where I was going with the idea that the fact that this should probably be assessed to Family Service Center now, because we will not have a debt payment out of it this year, and, and we have been transferring some dollars in recent years to satisfy some of that. We were pleased that there wouldn't be a debt service payment. I was pretty excited about that at the beginning of this year.
That's Georgia's good work there.
That, that's right. There you go. And so, we'll, we, we will see at the end of the year what revenues hopefully will exceed expenses this year, but with this.
For fourteen?
For fourteen.
I'm still waiting for thirteen.
On, on the building?
Revenue's over.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm talking about the Family Service Center. Anyway.
Talking about the county.
We will get that. But anyway, and, and that's why I wanted to point out Fund Nineteen, that we could take some of those dollars from, because it is a capital improvement project. So, at the end of the year, if we were short within the Family Service Center. The other thing is, you know, you, if you chose to pay for it out of reserves, you could do that as well. But, like I said.
Well, we clearly, we clearly have a problem where we don't want our citizens being locked in between floors on a, on a building here, and it's, I, I begin to question safety significantly there. You know, at what point is it gonna be where all of a sudden it's gonna be difficult to retrieve them out of there?
It's already been difficult a couple times. We've had them locked in there for an hour or more.
Georgia, what did you say, a couple of them?
Yesterday, there was a couple people.
Was it yesterday again? I know there were four or five instances, maybe it was more than that, of that.
Well, we gotta.
Elevator failing. I don't think we have a lot of choice. It's just.
Gotta take some action on this to get this resolved, and I'm not, I'm not pleased. Typically, when we see bids come in over ten percent, we.
Well, we base our, you know, we say that we estimated three hundred thousand dollars. Who gave us that estimate?
Would be.
That was Brian's, you said three thirty. Three thirty was, I think, the estimate that Otis actually provided.
Okay.
So, three hundred was a hope.
That was a hope. Power is hope.
I mean, we, I just wonder whether, we had someone here that was giving us a pretty good estimate of what it should cost. I mean, I realize you did, I mean, excuse me, I mean, that's the same, you were wrong or anything like that, but, I mean, you said your experience in, in elevators isn't that great, you know, so, or, I mean, you haven't done that.
It just becomes such a technical area that, and it's constantly changing.
Okay, so.
So, what you know one year doesn't necessarily mean you know much the next.
We're probably ten percent over on the bid or whatever, but it's, who knows?
I, I guess I'm always leery when we only have one, one bid, but we don't really have this choice. We need to, we need to make it, sure it's safe and secure for our citizens.
What, Brian, what was our timeline to get working on this?
Well, I, I guess I would ask the architect if I could. What do we, their bid is valid for sixty days?
I believe so, whatever it says.
That's usually the thing. I frankly would probably like to see us visit with the architect, maybe visit with the companies and see if there is a different approach that we can take on this, if, if we can deal directly with the elevator companies. You have to, you know, it exceeds the hundred thousand dollar threshold required to bid, bid it, but, I don't know. It.
But we did bid.
That's stretching for four hundred thousand dollars. Was that?
This was a bid.
This was a bid. So, we've met that requirement. Whether we can negotiate or whatever, I'd like to have a little bit of time before you approve the bid.
Chair, we don't meet for two weeks, right?
Right.
So, in two weeks, you should be able to have found out if there's any changes we can make.
Yes.
And then we can be aggressive at getting it done after, after the.
Yeah, yeah. Why don't we, why don't we do that? If, if Georgia can keep veiling people out of there for, they're stuck every other day for a couple hours in the elevator.
Are both, are both elevators having trouble at this point? Or can we just make sure that everybody goes and uses one on the left or something instead of?
This one seems to have more problems than the last one.
And frankly, one of the questions we had, Mr. Chair, was the fact that could we fix one this year and one next year? And they said that the mechanisms work together here. So, we can't do that. I, I don't, can't is a big word, but.
But the plan is to fix one at a time, so one is always in operation. And I think the timeline for this is six to maybe nine months.
To, to make the total fix?
Yeah, the equipment has such a long lead time on it.
Okay.
So, that's the biggest time delay issue.
So, in the meantime, these things are inspected and they're, they're.
Yes.
They're meeting inspections, right?
Yes.
So, it's, so we're, we're certainly where we need to be with checking on safety issues and that.
They're serviced, they're inspected, they're, they're, they're repaired the best they can by the elevator people, but they just keep, keep the people stuck in.
So, can you come back in two weeks then with something for us? And we have. How long do we have to accept or reject, Jenny? Is it in terms of the bids?
Sixty days.
Sixty days? Okay. And then maybe, Brian, at the same point in time in that two week period, if you can come back to us with a recommendation for funding.
I got one question, Kevin. If we've had all these issues with it, are, do you know what we're spending in, say, the last year on maintenance? Is it, as we'd resolve that issue too, then if we're already spending money on a constant basis maintaining it or trying to keep it operating?
Mr. Chair, I can't give you that figure, but it did come into discussion. How much are we spending? And I know we do have a service contract, but then we still owe hay for, for calls too, but that service contract costs us quite a bit as well. So, if, if they warranted it for a year or whatever the warranty is on it, that would be helpful in, in a payment as well, 'cause I know it's substantial. These people have to come and pay.
At this point, I think we'll table any action on the bids until our next meeting date.
Macest.
Macest. Then we can just get that first thing on the agenda. Okay? Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming to see us.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thanks for letting me in.
Okay, our next item is a joint powers agreement between Clay County Northwest Minnesota Regional Emergency Communications Board, and we've got our emergency manager, Brian Green, with us today. Good morning, Brian.
Good morning. This is more of an updated joint powers agreement. Back in two thousand and six was the first one. There are a lot of changes on the state to include a lot of different things in the, the joint powers agreement. The state changed, so then the, our regionals had to change. It's pretty self-explanatory. Jenny has looked at the draft and the final version, and she's seen the problems with it in the future. Again, this is our, I believe, Grant, you're on that board.
Mm-hmm.
It's our agreement with our region to basically agree on how we can spend grant money and stuff like that throughout the region. Before, it used to be just the armor system. Now, they included the E nine-one-one, the IPOS, and then it'll be the first net, which is coming down the road for the state of Minnesota and the federal government. If any questions or any comments.
I see my friend Greg, Greg Anderson is here. Greg, are you still working on this stuff too, this regional radio stuff? You're not involved anymore?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the joint powers agreement amendments.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If it's the same. Motion carried.
Thank you.
We'll get you a signed copy of it.
Thanks, Brian.
Vicky, if I have that one.
All right, environmental programs director Bruce Jaster requests approval to enter into an agreement with Cass County Inspector for the Commission for Adult Mosquito Surveillance. And we have a couple of issues, and we're gonna talk about increased fees for water testing.
Mr. Chair.
Let's do the mosquito issue first.
Okay. I sent in your packet a copy of the contract that was drawn up with Cass County Vector Control and Cass County Government. Jenny has looked at it, and she saw no problem with it. We had discussed this last year about, about Cass County going out and collecting and, and sorting and stuff, but the mosquitoes we have, from the traps we have in the county here. And we have met and the, I just got an email from Ben Prater from the Cass County Vector Control, and he said yesterday at the Cass County meeting, they did approve the contract for Clay County and the city of Morehead. So, I guess it's.
So, their half of the deals.
Pardon me?
Their half of the deal's been approved.
Yes.
So, how much do they, what do they do? How much do they spend? How much time do they spend here? What is their?
Well, in the contract, they have just put in a, a dollar amount up to a certain amount, and we can, you know, reject the contract or void the contract after that dollar amount. Basically, we will be putting up the traps, using our traps in three locations in the county. They will use their staff to collect and then bring them back to count and sort and provide us with a report.
That's the part that's different. The collecting and the.
In the past, we have always put them up. In the past, we have always put them out, collected them, and brought them over to them for county and sorting.
So now they were just-
Now they will take over the, the collecting part of it, as they are with the city of Morehead also.
So it's surveillance, are they following them in a van or are they doing that? So I don't know.
We do, I do get a fair amount of questions from residents wondering if we have a spraying program and things like that in the county, which we don't. Cass County has a very active mosquito abatement program over there. I think they employ like 25 people during the summer months, so. Most of our smaller communities have their own spraying programs.
So this kind of cost is about 1,500 extra, is that what-
I think the max on the contract-
The max is 25.
Twenty-five, yes.
But I mean-
We're just looking to improve 1,500 with possibility.
The 1,500 is the, the cost for labor supplies, et cetera, and then the $1,000 extra is for fuel insurance and miscellaneous costs. So that's a, that is a given $1,000 that will be billed at $250 on each monthly statement. So it is a $2,500 contract if you look at all the parts together.
All right, now, very good, thank you.
You know, for something as irritating as mosquitoes are, for the discomfort of a lot of people, especially in a high year where they're really bad, $2,500 is to me just a drop in the bucket in investment. And I, at some point, I, I hope you would even look at the potential of more than three collection sites.
At one point, we did have five. And due to budget cuts, we were asked to reduce that to three.
Well, I just, when you have residents that can't even go outside, it's, it's, it becomes an investment that's worthy of doing. So I, maybe we'll have a dry year and it won't be an issue, but I think as this progresses, I, this $2,500 is just not very much money for, for-
Do we have, we have three sites. Does Morehead have some sites too then?
Well, they have many sites throughout Morehead, yes. And Wilworth has some traps out, and I think Glendon. Well, I think they just spray. They just periodically spray. The nice thing about this is, you know, Cass County has been active with their program, and being the Red River Corridor, mosquitoes have a range of 10 to 15 miles. So it'll, it's a good indicator of what things they're doing around the area too.
Mr. Chair, where are our three sites then?
Barnesville, Holly, and Oakport. That Oakport one we may change since next year because it will be part of the city now, so we can move that trap to another location.
I'll move to approve the agreement.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same motion carried. Okay. Now we're off to the increased fees for water testing.
Yes, we discussed the water lab a couple of weeks ago. We have not had an increase in fees since 2005. So to help offset some of the costs that associated with the lab, I am proposing a increase of, for the, for the total coliform bacteria and the nitrate and nitrogen, increase them to $15 per sample, and the other tests that we provide, increase them by a dollar to 12. Calculating last year's number of tests, it'll bring in right, right around another 2,100 bucks. It's not a lot, but it's something to help offset some of the costs. The City of Fargo, at their water plant, they charge $27 right now, and the nearest lab, which is Detroit Lakes, they charge $30 for the bacteria and the nitrate samples. Those are the two most commonly requested.
So what will ours be after the increase then?
Right now, the bacteria and the nitrate test are $13 each. With the, what I'm requesting, it would be 15 each.
Up to 15?
From 13 to 15.
Oh, okay. I thought you were asking for a 15 dollar increase.
Oh, no, no, no.
And what's the one with the $1?
The other test we, we provide fluoride, iron, chloride, alkalinity, hardness, pH. Would, I'd like to increase them up to $12 a sample.
From 11?
Yes.
And all of these, even with these increased amounts, it doesn't even cover the full cost of, of what we pay to have those samples done, correct?
No.
So it's kind of a, this is kind of a cost here with the person who-
Exactly.
Who is, is requesting it.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we, we grant, do the increases as requested.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same motion carried. Thank you, Bruce. Anything else for us today?
Not yet.
Not yet? Is that like a, is that a shot across the bow?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next one is a doozy. All right, it's now time to hold our public hearing for the subsurface sewage treatment system, also known as SSTs, ordinance. Planning director Tim Maggison and real, director Bruce Jaster are going to be here. Do we have a motion to open the hearing?
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same motion carried. Okay. Tim, are you going to take this one?
This was the shot across the bow.
This is the shot across the bow. Got to have one a day.
Well, let's see. I don't know the last time the state made a major change in their SSTs ordinance, but over the course of the last few years, they've been working on it real hard. And in 2011, they adopted the new rules, regulations, and standards for, for SSTs. Also started calling them SSTs, which I think is-
Yeah, new C-I-S-T-S, but-
Yeah, it's, it's one of those things. You never know when the state does what they do. Anyway, the new regulations are in place, and the counties are being required to incorporate the new regulations into local ordinances dealing with SSTs's. And that's why we're here. We are required, and we need to do it relatively soon, to adopt the new SSTs regulations into our ordinance. I guess the carrot that's hanging out there is that right now through the natural resource block grant, the county gets just short of $20,000 a year from the MPCA to help fund our SSTs program. And we got that last year. We'll get it again this year, but the caveat is we have to adopt the new regulations into our ordinance. The MPCA has been fairly flexible relative to the new regulations. They've actually allowed us to adopt different categories of them, classifications of them, and also allowed us to make some modifications to them, as long as those modifications meet the approval of the MPCAs, so. Bruce has been working long and hard on putting the ordinance that you have in front of you together. We actually had a conference call yesterday with the MPCA, and they, I think there were six other people on the line from there. We went through the ordinance page by page, and there were three small changes that they, they recommended that we make that really don't have any bearing as to how the, the ordinance operates. It was a definition and a couple of other small things, and we'll note that as we go on, but-
If I could, I'd like to say Carol Decker from MPCA is in the audience in case there's some questions that you have for the agency.
I think yesterday, one of the biggest surprises to us, and in your memo, it's, I made note that we had adopted it as a conventional standards ordinance, or were intending to. In our discussion with the PCA yesterday, there's a block of things that, that they say must be done, and we have changed that to may be done. And just in, in that alone, as far as the PCA is concerned, that changes our, our adaptive classification from, from the conventional standards to the alternative local standards, which again, really doesn't have a lot of bearing on the ordinance and its administration. It's just a matter of how the PCA classifies it when they look at them as they come-
Does it still qualify for the funds?
Oh, yeah, it doesn't do anything to, relative to the funding process, so. Like I said, Bruce has been working on this for quite a while, and you've got a copy of the ordinance in front of you. You had the four pages of the comparative between the 2006 standards and the new 2011 standards. I guess I'd open it up for questions. I know that Greg Anderson is here. He sent us an email this morning that he has some questions, and I guess we'll be able to answer him his questions too.
Ask his questions too.
Does that, $20,000 received, how much does that pay, does that cover the cost of what we do, or not even close, or?
Oh, I guess I'm never-
And with the changes in this, will our costs go up in terms of what we have to do?
There are some things we haven't figured out. The operating permits and management plans, that part of how we're going to monitor them. I don't know that'll affect the overall cost to, to us for, for the, for the ordinance. But to give you, you know, an estimate, I'm not sure what my overall budget is with, with the program.
Not understanding this, that well yet. I mean, we're just adopting the 2011 rule right now, or are we three years behind, or are we?
Well, they've been, they've had the O6, the O8, and in 2010, we were supposed to have adopted a new, a new ordinance, and then that got postponed. And now this year is kind of the drop dead time when all the locals have to adopt a new ordinance.
So nothing's changed since 2011, though?
No.
Well, the Minnesota Rural Counties Caucus had lots of issues with this when it first came out, but-
I remember that was on there.
Yeah, it's one of the reasons that it's taken as long as it has. Like I said, they probably started this whole process at least five years ago, and 2011, it kind of came to fruition, so. My main question is, these rules, the new rules now apply for any new construction?
Right.
What does it do to previous construction that no longer is in compliance?
Well, the compliance inspections, the part that isn't really going to change is, is that proper separation. I mean, that's been in the three foot separation, been in the rule forever.
But are people going to be having to go out and change systems that previously were acceptable?
No.
Okay, well, that's-
So the three foot separation, explain that to me.
Well, the requirement for separation for, to seasonal groundwater is three feet.
Oh, okay.
Meaning you have a seasonal water table at four feet, where you can only go one foot in the ground.
Okay. So it's got to do with the groundwater table?
Yep.
Okay.
Seasonal groundwater.
But I was looking at something just like the septic tank strength, you know, the depth of burial of, of the tanks is-
What, yeah, what, what that, what we have in, in ours is the, the depth of burial will be, will be to the depth of whatever the manufacturer warranties his tank. So we're not saying you can only go two feet in the ground or anything like that, as to whatever depth the, the tank manufacturer warranties that tank.
Okay. The capacity for dwellings changes considerably, I see.
That does change some. I have had conversations with our contractors, and they don't see it as a, as a real big issue. One of the changes was, in the past, if you had a garbage disposal and a grinder pump in your home, you would have to double your septic tank capacity, where under the new regulations, it's just 50%.
I, I assume that what, what took so long with this is originally, I think the MPCA wasn't willing to make any changes, but over time, it looks like they're allowing counties to, you know, make some amendments or some local standards, and that, I think that's what, originally, they didn't want to do that at all, but I think there was enough pressure from, from at least rural counties to make those changes.
Right.
So going back to John's question on these tank capacities for, for the size of the dwelling and the number of bedrooms, have the, the current rule now says 750 in the newer, for a two bedroom, and the new one is a 1,000 gallon. What, what happens to that one that's out there right now at 750?
As long as everything else is fine above, we're not going to replace it on a compliance inspection.
So it just needs to be functioning?
Yes.
And if it's not functioning, then you got issues.
Right.
There's no problem with, when it's sold? I mean, that's- No. No, those, those types of things, if in the future, the system fails and there's a requirement that it needs to be replaced, that the entire system will probably-
And they'll have to get the new standards.
But it's just, it's, the criteria just simply is, well, you have a two bedroom home now, you're selling it, so you got to upgrade it to a-
Supposed technically, if we wanted to, we could probably press that, but I think that's not what's most likely to do.
A lot of times what we, what I see out there is somebody build a new house, they'll skimp on the sewer and build it for a three bedroom, and say five years down the road, all of a sudden, they got a six bedroom. I see that frequently.
Well, would this, would this be part of the building plan approval process in terms of the size of the septic system to the construction?
It is. And Bruce brings up a very valid point, you know, there are people who will go to three bedroom house and, and will not indicate any, you know, finishing of a basement, that sort of thing. And if they don't indicate that there's a finished basement, we really can't say, well, you know, you can put six bedrooms down there. But, you know, three years later, they decide that they're going to finish the basement off, they finish it with two or three, you know, additional bedrooms, then it does create a bit of an issue because upon sale, if they're going to market it as a six bedroom or a five bedroom house, then the system should be compliant with that requirement. We ask people, when we do our, our building plan reviews with them and that sort of thing, you know, what their intent is, and if they give us floor plans that's, you know, they say, well, we're not going to finish the basement, but their floor plans indicate, you know, potential for two, two bedrooms down there, then we'll, we'll push the issue and require them to size for what the plans say.
How do we know what's down there? I mean, if you got a 20-year-old house and there's-
We don't.
We don't, okay.
And really, that gets indicated more often than not when it goes up for sale, as to what they list it as. You know, because generally, they will list it with as many bedrooms as they think they, they have legitimate bedrooms for. They can get a better price for it, so. It could come through the assessor's office. I mean, they, if they can get in the building, which sometimes they can, sometimes they can't.
But do we know the size of the tanks in all of these?
Well, we know the size of the tanks, the septic's, that information is available to us.
That's what, that was-
Since we don't have the building codes that require permits for internal, you know, construction remodeling, that sort of thing, we don't have any idea.
We have records that go back to about 1985 for systems that had permits in the county.
So if I have a problem with my system out there, do I have to, if I want to repair it, do I have to come to you to get a permit?
Yes.
What if I don't? I mean, do, do we know when they do it or don't do it, or?
Well, it's like anything-
I mean, I guess it's like anything, I suppose.
Right.
Anything, anything in this, these changes that would impact our maintenance operators, the people who help maintain these systems?
There's some requirements from the state that they, you know, when they do a pump, that they maintain records of how much was pumped and that sort of thing. There's some reference to, they, you know, they have to take it either to an approved municipal system to, to dispose of that septic. Or, and we added into it, we had added into it to a certified site or a registered site, that sort of thing. When our, in our discussion with the PCA yesterday, we added in there just a site that meets the guidelines for septic application in a, a document that the PCA has put out in the past. in a document that the PCA has put out in the past.
So is this going to be new and surprising to all of these different people that go out and.
No.
Pump septic systems?
I don't think it'd be that big of a deal. I mean, federal regulations require them to keep records anyway.
Okay, so they're doing it now?
Yeah, well, federal regulations require them to be doing it.
So they should be doing it now?
Yes.
Federal government requires you to file your income tax?
Yeah.
Most people do, yeah.
All right, any more, Greg Anderson, you want to come up here or you want to go to the podium?
I can go to the podium. I'm glad to see Tim wrote in the building this morning. I sent him an email at all midnight.
I can't imagine.
I have read my emails between midnight and eight o'clock this morning.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Greg Anderson, I'm here, I've gone through the ordinance, I guess I'm speaking more as a realtor who does a fair amount of work in rural Clay County. And a lot of the folks I work with have got septic systems. And I'd like to start off first by saying I'm not opposed to making good changes. I think we really need to protect the environment, the lakes or so forth. We just need to do everything right out there. I'm just concerned that some of the changes we have might have an impact, you know, that we're not thinking of the rule of unintended consequences. Again, my notes are a little sketchy. I'd hope to do my homework much sooner, but it ended up being late last night. And the page you have there, I just kind of tied to the page numbers as some questions I had in the ordinance. First question I had had to do with page three in a talk about, oh, then I grabbed my Becker County ordinance. Talked about what's a qualified employee. I wasn't sure if that meant like a private pumper, installer, designer. Qualified employee, Tim explained would be either Tim or Bruce or somebody from county staff, it's not a private person. And so that answered a lot of the questions I had there. Next concern I had jumps over to page eight and it talks to sections H and M. What they're requiring now is if you have a holding tank, you have to have an electronic or an electrical alarm that lets you know when the tank needs to be pumped. And that, I can understand why that might be a good idea. My fear is it might create a burden if you've got a tank in the yard that doesn't have an electronic system. When I go to recertify that tank, do I need to now run power out there, dig the tank up and add all this hardware? I just heard Bruce and Tim say that that's not the case, that you won't have to alter a legal operating system, so that may not be a concern. The only thing is, we can talk about that here, but the ordinance may state something different in 10 years from now. If nobody's sure to remember this conversation, that might be an unintended consequence of passing the ordinance here. On page nine, section 204C requires that operators or owners have a valid contract with somebody that pumps tanks. I can understand, the concept is that you're under contract with somebody to do the tank pumping, but I know in my case, I may want to use somebody that might be less expensive, somebody that's not very busy. I just, I don't know that we need to require people, everybody out there with a system to have some type of contract with some type of tank pumper. The bigger part is if you're going to require these contracts, is it a matter of just, I have a verbal agreement with somebody and nobody's tracking it anyhow, so it really doesn't matter. I mean, if there's no follow-up, if there's no consequences, no intention to actually pay attention to it, why even require it in an ordinance? And again, I'd just like the freedom to decide who I want to pick to do my work. On page 10, it talks about wanting to measure the volume coming out of the tank. I know I've had, I have my tank pumped every other year. I think the recommendation is to do it every three years. I know when I sell lake real estate to clients, I tell people I would pump them even more often because it's cheaper to pump when you don't need to than it is to plug a drain filled up with solids. So I see this as preventive medicine, kind of like just taking care of brushing your teeth and flossing. But I'm not sure what the ideas behind measuring what comes out of the tank. I've got a 1,500 gallon tank in the ground. Pretty obvious there's going to be 1,500 gallons coming out. And if it's 1,300 or 14 or 16, why are we tracking a number that nobody cares about or doesn't matter? Maybe there's a science to it, I don't know what that is, but I can't imagine why we're requiring that extra step on somebody there. Page 13, section 301, and another area. Could we try to get answers? Maybe our MPCA person can help us with that as well, I don't know. So we don't have to come back to each one?
Well, I can answer that page nine, valid contract with pumpers, that's only, only for holding tanks. And so the way you were describing it, I thought you were talking about call system, but that's specifically for holding tanks.
Okay, and sort of that in, I'm just not sure if they pull 800 gallons out of my holding tank or 1,500. In the grand scheme of life, I don't know who would, I don't know what the relevance of knowing that number is.
Does it have to do with where it's going?
No, it's more an indication if there's a crack in the tank.
Her reply was, because her microphone was on, or was that it could indicate a cracked tank?
I understand. It might also just indicate that you haven't used the lake home all summer.
Right.
Could, and that's my only thought, is you just don't know.
I usually look down at mine and see if it needs it, Greg.
Yeah, most people have it slow.
Take a second, Greg.
Yeah, maybe you should come up and use the microphone if you're going to. Yeah, we are in a public hearing, so if you wouldn't mind stating your name when you sit down here and.
Sure.
And try to talk into that microphone there, please. Thank you.
I'm Carol Decker and I'm with the MPCA. And your other question was about being able to choose who you want to maintain your tank. As long, you can choose, you can choose other maintainers, you just need to have a signed contract when you're switching over so that you can always have a contract. It doesn't prevent you from switching to somebody else that they have cheaper rates.
And I understand, but it just, it adds another layer of bureaucracy. I've got to have the contract. I don't know if I need to forward it to Tim's office so he's got the contract. I don't, I can understand the concept, but it sounds like a great idea, but now that we've put this extra step in the process, who's going to pay attention to the step? I mean, a lot of this really comes back to homeowners taking care of their systems and I don't know that this is going to make a lot more people be more attentive. It's, from my side, it's frustrating how many people I deal with in rural areas that don't understand the first thing about a septic system. I mean, I think we need more education and we need requirements to get contracts and those type of things, and I don't know how we get that education out there.
I would suggest that maintenance plans are a great tool to inform homeowners of what they need to do with their septic systems to take care of them.
Hey Greg, can you continue on?
Page 13, and throughout the ordinance, there's this discussion on operating plans for holding tanks. And I pulled a couple of operating plans, but they seem pretty simplistic, you know, I don't see it's a big concern and I do agree. If people get educated when they buy a property, they put a system on, I think they might do a better job of caring for it. I just, again, I don't know that requiring somebody to file an operating plan and then I have to send the operating plan to the county, now county staff has to track it and monitor it. Further down in the ordinance, it talks about that when you sell the property, you can't transfer that plan to the new person. They have to come up with a new plan and I understand that concept, but it also says an inspection may be required at that time. And I don't, it doesn't really answer this, but for sake of discussion, if I get my system certified this year in 2014, the certificate is supposed to be good for three years. If I transfer the property to somebody else next year, they have to come up with a new operating plan. Is the county going to accept that three-year certification? Am I going to need to recertify my system again next year? That's not spelled out in here. I just see it as kind of an open loophole that might be a problem for somebody else down the road.
Well, the operating permit is for holding tanks and mid-size type systems. So the operating permit is really only going to apply to holding tanks. The maintenance, the maintenance agreements that the contractor provides to the homeowner and the county is for the operation of standard, standard type system.
On page 16, section 2, it talks that management plans are required for all newer replacement systems. So it doesn't say here that it's only for newer replacement holding tanks. As I read this, I took it to mean any new system that goes in the ground will need an.
A management plan, yes. Operating permit, no.
Okay.
Yeah, the operating permit is just for holding tanks, mid-size type and what was the other?
Like high-strength ways. Looking at restaurant play facilities.
So once I have a management plan, when I put a new system in, then is that ever looked at again? Does that need to be renewed or is that a lifetime plan?
That's a lifetime for the management plan.
Page 17, it talks about a slight change in the ordinance, section four towards the bottom. Right now, the county requires, and I think it's a good requirement, when you transfer property, you have to have a valid septic certificate. Normally, when I work with buyers that are buying rural property, I, if other counties such as Becker County doesn't require it, I still encourage it because you should know what you're getting if you're buying a property. But this is a change now that says when a buyer and a seller sign a purchase agreement, they have to have the certificate in place prior to signing an agreement to sell or transfer property. And I'm assuming this would mean the contract purchase agreement. I don't know if it meant that or if that means at the time of deed transfer.
This, this is something that's been in the current ordinance since 96. We've always had a requirement for compliance upon transfer since I've been here.
And that's how I've understood it, but this actually says before you sign an agreement to sell or transfer property, that doesn't relate to recording the deed. Person calls me up and says, I want to sell my farmstead. The way I would read this, I would have to tell that person, before you can list it, we should get the sewer certified so we can accept a purchase agreement from the buyer. As a realtor, I might be uncomfortable actually accepting a purchase agreement from a buyer the way this reads because it would tell me I may be in violation of the ordinance. I'm signing an agreement to transfer the property. If it maybe was cleaned up to just indicate at the time the deed is actually recorded. Further down, there's language that talks about how you deal with that, you know, during the winter, which is also important because you can't certify these things in the winter. I thought that is an area that might just need to be tweaked a little bit.
Mr. Chair, if I might add a bit.
Yes, sir.
Having a certification prior to a purchase agreement really protects the buyer. You know, we have people who get into agreements and then all of a sudden, their septic's are done and somebody's liable for $70,000 worth of septic work. And if that's known ahead of time, that might be a deal breaker in an agreement that a buyer should have the right to know that.
But Tim, isn't that, isn't that any different than, than, you know, with what Greg's talking about? Isn't that any different than now typically all homes today, when you go to buy a home, there's an inspection part of that that goes with it? And under that inspection clause, if things are found to be inconsistent with what the buyer's wants were, there's an opportunity to, to out the contract.
Again, that depends on how the purchase agreement is written.
Well, but typically, the purchase agreements have that. And it seems to me that purchase agreements, you know, if you get good lawyers drafting your purchase agreements, they, they would probably touch on what Greg's talking about too in terms of protecting not only the buyer, but the seller.
The goal to me would be to protect everybody. And I can only speak to our firm, when we normally write an offer representing a buyer, we include a well and a sewer inspection contingency. We require that they have the septic certified prior to closing and they have the water test done. And I've had some rather angry clients, a 10-year-old house that had a brand new, or a 10-year-old system in the ground, the water table came up. $600,000 sale, the seller had to put in a $15,000 mound system. They were not very happy that their 10-year-old system was no good. But like I explained, when somebody's buying a half million dollar property, they have an expectation to have a legal and operating sewer. And the ordinance now requires it. And the challenge is part of the educational component, and I think once this ordinance is done, it might be good if we could partner with the Fargo-Moorehead Association of Realtors and present some information, letting them know what the new rules are, what to expect going forward. Because I don't know that everybody does that. I've seen some come through without that. I just know that I wouldn't send one through without it.
I just, I just read a, a purchase agreement on a piece of property in South Morehead last night. It's within the city limits and there is no septic system and no wells. But yet, the purchase agreement addressed the exact same things you had that you talked about in there, even though it didn't apply. So it's almost like it's become a, a standard language in, in purchase agreements now to cover the area of septic systems because they can be very, as Tim said, they can be very surprising and very costly to find out after the fact, so let's relearn them.
The reason that went in there was probably 15-plus years ago where we had a, had a sale, like two days before closing, and we did a compliance. And the homeowner, the seller of the property had agreed to update, you know, pay for any updates, assuming that, thinking that it was good. So we did a compliance and needed a new system. Well, there wasn't enough leeway in the sale that they, they lost on the deal because they'd signed and agreed. So what I tell the homeowners is, you know, you're responsible for having the compliance inspection done. It does not say you're responsible for paying for any updates. It's one of those things that the buyer and the seller both know upfront before you, anybody says that over here or over here are going to pay for it or split it or whatever.
And that's language we normally include. But we run into a bigger challenges in the winter. We sold a property in February. You can't do a compliance inspection, you don't know what's there. From, again, I can just speak to our firm, but we actually have an addendum in there saying if the septic can't be certified, the seller will escrow $12,000. That money is held until the system is certified. If upgrades are needed, the cost is taken out of that $12,000. We have mechanisms to do that and it works pretty good when people work with agents. Sometimes you run into a challenge where you just have private party sales and people aren't aware of these things. Again, I, I think it's a good idea and I support the idea of having it certified at the transfer. I'm just, if we could clean that language up, because again, the way I read it, it says before I can actually sign a valid contract, I should have that septic installation. It might just be an area that needs a minor tweak or a minor adjustment, not a major concern. Otter Tail County put this in effect last August. Otter Tail County required everybody have a septic compliance before they can transfer deed effective August 1. And I think they announced that rule about the middle of January or July last year. And a lot of the agents in that area were scrambling in the two-week period to get compliances done so they could record a deed after August 1st. I would just like to see us sort this out before we put an ordinance in place so we're not struggling with those signatures.
Any more, Greg?
No, I think that's good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other people from the public interested in coming on the open hearing? Sure, come on up. If you would state your name, please, and your address for us.
My name is Jeremy Clark. I'm with Clark's Escapating and Septic Service. I'm also a township officer in Cragness Township. I live in rural Morehead. I guess none of the rule changes are really going to affect anything that we do. We currently install to a higher standard than what's usually ruled already. The alarms and filters are something we've done for 15 years. It's not, we're not asking people to do more than what they need to. It's what they should have in to have a working septic system. Because things don't break on a Tuesday, they break on Saturdays, Sundays, holidays. And to find someone that, usually you can walk them through whatever their problem is over the phone if you have the proper alarms and stuff in place. And as far as the, the real estate aspect of it, realtors call two days before closing every time. And they want it now and they want it to pass and they don't, or they want to put it in before they sell it. But then they can also charge, you know, if you install a $12,000 septic system, they get a percentage of that $12,000 because it raises the price of the property. And a lot of times when we install a septic system, the buyer will actually pay for something better because they're moving in. Where when a realtor comes in, they want the bare minimum, I don't want my client to spend any more than they have to. I just want just enough to squeak by all the rules and get it in there and get out. Whereas the buyer, a lot of times, they will want, say, a two-compartment tank versus a one-compartment tank, probably $400. The buyer will easily spend $400 for something that's going to make their property more valuable and last longer. So I guess as far as anything that's going to change from a working standpoint, I don't see anything in the ordinance that we aren't already doing that's going to cause any undue stress. And as far as holding tanks go, there probably should be some type. And as far as holding tanks go, there probably should be some type of agreement because it's not uncommon to see a holding tank with a hose sticking out of it that does not have an agreement, or they just don't want to pay to have it properly disposed of. Even this year, with all the stuff freezing, if anybody's driven around and you know what a septic tank looks like, you can see a lot of hoses sticking out of septic tanks. I think we had twelve or so that froze. They weren't, two of them were ours, and they were mechanical failures, and then they left for two months. The other ones were just some improper installation practices. But those, we've been pumping periodically throughout the winter to keep them. But we also drive by a lot that have the hoses hanging out with the sub pump in them, and they're running to the backyard or whatever. But that's not my job to run around and enforce that kind of stuff. So I do feel for those people, but obviously, there's a right way to handle things, and there's a wrong way. But as far as having a contract with someone, they probably should, at least in agreement, that they will, that someone is in charge of taking care of them and disposing of the sewage properly and correctly. So.
When you heard Mr. Anderson talk a little bit ago about the timing, the sequency of that contract, did what he say make sense to you?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you don't have to, the county should have some record of someone that's, you know, if the county gets a complaint, they can go and say, all right, well, in your sheet, you have company X taking care of your stuff. If they don't, they need to be able to call company X and say, when was the last time you serviced that septic tank? Well, they should be able to pull that up and let you know. And if they can't, and it's been a couple of years, then obviously, you know it's going somewhere that it probably shouldn't be going. As far as electronic monitoring, it's really not that. The systems that we do, I think a floating alarm is about eighty dollars. And, you know, the wire that's all low voltage plugs into an outlet.
That's the cost while you're installing the whole system, is that correct?
Yeah.
Because if you have a holding system that's been in place that doesn't have these monitors, and as Mr. Anderson said, that thing's sitting back ways in your yard, and there's no electricity going to it, there's going to be a little cost to that, correct?
Yeah. And if it's a holding tank, usually, it's not more than ten feet away from a building. You know, I mean, Morehead Airport has multiple holding tanks out there. There's different places that have multiple holding tanks, and they're all monitored electronically. You know, it can go as far as to, Crystal Sugar has some that have automatic dialers where it just calls and tells you it's full, and you go take care of it. So it's a price point of where you want to start to stop.
I have a holding tank at the lake, and I know when it's full.
Yeah.
Things don't work.
Yeah. Yeah, it gurgles, and, yeah. Yeah, if you've got a kid, you can send out that check. That works great, too, but it doesn't always.
Well, thank you for your comments.
Yeah, thank you.
John?
I have a question of Bruce and Tim, and is there anything here that's been presented that needs adjusting in the thing? Do you feel, you recommend us adopting what's here?
I do, yes.
I would agree with Bruce. I think what we got here is a good representation of some changes that were made, you know, for our purposes. Overall, the MPCA's requirements are being fulfilled and adopted here. I don't think there's anything totally out of whack with it.
I guess my only concern, and I guess I typically, this is a pretty significant ordinance to pass on the first day presented to a board and even through a public hearing. And I do have a concern with one of the items that Mr. Anderson brought up that, and I've known Greg for a long time, and he's an active realtor, and I'm sure he probably speaks for a lot of other realtors when he gives some of these concerns. And it goes to this initiating contract upfront. I just wonder, you know, he's given us some advice to potentially tweak that. It's almost like before something can even go up for sale, that there has to be this agreement signed. And I don't know if that, in the world of the way real estate works, I think he's telling us that that can create problems. And I don't know if there's a way that we could tweak that with the same outcome in mind, but it's like, I think he made the comment that, jeez, we could be breaking the law almost for, based on this ordinance, for signing this or not signing this before, or not having this before we've signed a purchase agreement. Am I getting that somewhat correctly?
Yeah, just to clarify that, because I mean, I think it needs to happen when a deed was signed. I think everybody agrees it needs to be certified when the deed is transferred. If we could just correct that language to indicate to that effect, that it's not when the purchase agreement might be signed between the buyer and seller, but when the deed is transferred. I can see, in my case, I might be reluctant to sign a purchase agreement on a property. And right now, the market is so hot, I mean, things are selling in three to four days in Fargo area. If I decide not to sign it because I'm afraid I might be violating the county ordinance, somebody else may have a different take on that, and my buyer's going to potentially lose the property because I didn't want to sign a contract when someone else did. If we could just correct it, just somehow reflect that it has to be inspected and certified prior to the transfer of ownership.
So if we were to tweak that language, that changes the timing of that, does that do anything to disqualify this plan?
No.
Okay. Then I believe that we should, you know, when we close this hearing, I would really like to see Jenny to maybe take a look at that particular portion here that Greg's pointed out into that, and see if we could modify that a little bit to make it a little bit more acceptable to, and we know from the provision standpoint of the needs to have it and everything being compliant, but we have a huge area out there of realtors and purchasers and buyers who, from a timing standpoint, just might not even understand the regulatory component of this as to the timing of it. And so it would seem to me that it still needs to be in the process before closing can occur, that this is addressed. But the fact that you've got it way at the very top before anything else can be done, I do find that a little troubling. John?
I don't know. I guess maybe I'm not understanding, but it seems to me that it would be a lot less surprises if it's done upfront before. I mean, that's where the problems would come for buyers and sellers, is if something happens that, in the process, once they've, if they've signed the purchase agreement, and then they find out what it's going to cost, seems to me that that's sometimes too late. If they, what's wrong with knowing it ahead of time, before you ever sign an agreement?
Well, I, you know, most purchase agreements are going to have it in there, but you don't necessarily know if it's correct or meets code or doesn't meet code, so.
Oh, we tweak this a little bit, you know. Is each county doing their own thing? Or is this a state ordinance, or, I mean, does every county have to come up with one of these?
Yep.
I mean, are they different? Are they, and each county's going to be different?
They're not that different, I don't think. I mean, there was a template for this ordinance that was put out on, I believe it was the AMC website. You know, so counties had a place to start, and it was a model ordinance that had, at a minimum, what the state was going to require you to have, and then you could start.
So if we start changing these things, do we have to go back to the state and say, do you approve of these changes? Or is that just a county thing?
We have done that. You know, the modifications that we made to the ordinance that you've got in front of you right now.
Has already gone through the state.
Has been reviewed. We sat in a conference call yesterday, and there were six people dealing with SSTs from the MPCA. And we went page by page and said, yep, these are.
So if we make more changes, you're going to have to go back and do that again?
Well, we're just going to have to make sure, and she can probably tell us if they're going to be good or not.
Very good, okay.
You know, one of the things that, and I think Bruce has, he hasn't touched on it here today, but I think he's running this issue, is that the way it's written right now, it's the responsibility of the seller to provide a potential buyer with the certification. I think that's good for the buyer, depending on what kind of negotiations go on, you know, after the fact, depending on whether the system needs to be fixed or not. One of the other things it does for the county is it gives us an opportunity to see systems and get compliance checks on systems. If a buyer or a seller puts a system on the market, it needs to have a compliance check in order to write a purchase agreement. It means he's going to get that compliance check done as soon as he decides to market the house. Well, if he never sells it, then we've got a compliance check on that property that we can utilize, you know, for the next five years. You know, we wouldn't see that necessarily if we're going to require, just before the transfer, the recording of the deed.
Tim, how about the guy who, or family who lives out in Anderson addition, and they have a septic system there? They don't have a clue about this ordinance that we've just established, and they've signed an agreement without this?
I don't think there's anything we're going to do.
But I think that still all goes to what Greg's talking about, is that they violated an ordinance. But they, how are they going to know? You know, somebody is going to go out there on a Friday night, and they talk to their spouse, and they say, well, let's list our house Saturday. Can they get a realtor? Or whether they have a realtor or not. And they put a sign up, and somebody comes in, says, here's a purchase agreement. I'll take it for what price you want. And they sign it. That's in violation of this.
Right, it is. We've had that verbiage in our ordinance for many years. And I know what happens. The problem I had was, is talking to sellers after the fact. They were not made, didn't know themselves, or were not made aware of the requirement. And that's where the education of the realtors would be good. Or they were told that they're responsible for updating, which our ordinance does not say that. A lot of times, it ends up being buyer and seller will negotiate the cost of the update. Still, the seller should know upfront what they're agreeing to sign.
They're agreeing to sign the house. They're agreeing to sell their house.
Yes. But if they're selling their house, and they're agreeing, and they're signing off saying, they'll pay for any updates, thinking that it's good, and it isn't.
See, that's not in our ordinance that the seller's responsible for those costs. What if it gets written into the purchase agreement, then they're on the hook, thinking they've got a good system, and then it turns out bad? So it works.
But if it's in the purchase agreement, then they're going to, they're going to be checking into it.
Maybe. You know, like I said, Bruce said with the septic system, you know, they write a purchase agreement that says, yeah, the septic system's good, as far as we're concerned, it's functioning. And the certification gets done, and now all of a sudden, they're on the hook for whatever many thousands of dollars.
Any other testimony for the public hearing before we close? Any other comments from the public?
Motion to close the hearing.
Most to close the hearing, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same. Motion carried. Let's see. Okay, what's the board's wishes?
Mr. Chair, I still have, if I was selling my property, I'd sure rather know what it's going to cost me upfront than after I thought I had a deal, and then find out that, you know, that I'm going to be twelve thousand short on the sale from what I expected, or whatever. And the issue of being in violation, if they're dealing through realtor, the realtor should know what the requirements are.
I had a home sale, John, just last night, that I, on this purchase agreement I was looking at, there's not a realtor involved.
Well, okay, but then, you know, there's responsibility, we all know there's responsibilities if we're controlling property.
But we have two innocent parties here, a buyer and a seller, who would have no clue about the need to sign off on that, or to have that septic system approved prior to them signing a purchase agreement.
Okay, when do they find out, then, in your constituency?
Well, it points out in the purchase agreement, and it does talk about, in this case, they don't even have a septic system, but within there, it talked about if this is found to be inadequate, the purchaser's responsible for this portion, the buyer's responsible for this portion to fix it. So it spells it out in the purchase agreement.
Well, but you can transfer without a purchase agreement, can't you? You could write it yourself, can't you, on a purchase agreement? It wouldn't necessarily be in there either.
Sure. Yeah, it's very possible.
Greg?
If I could comment just to that, maybe I can just clarify to John's point there, John. One of the things that we see, and I think Bruce and Tim will attest to this, even if you do a private sale between two parties, when the deed hits the recorder's office, they're going to be looking for that certification, and they're not going to record the deed, are they not, Bruce?
No, it is not a requirement. I have tried to get that as a requirement for years, but it is not a requirement.
And I thought it was. I was assuming that's what I record was, because I know when I work with the closing companies in town, the, what I call the ones that are good, they make sure that that's done. Otter Tail County has an actual form the closing company has to provide with the deed, a copy of the sewer certification, or a plan on how you're going to deal with it if it closes in January. So, I mean, it needs to be done. I think it should happen. It's just a matter of how we make sure it's done the way it should be. And if we're not requiring that at recording a deed, I think that might be a positive step.
I just, I just think what we have here is, we've got an overall, I think, ordinance here that isn't too far from what we've always had. We've had somebody from the implementation side of it stand up, was in the business of it, stand up and say, this is probably a good thing, it's not going to hurt his, what he does. As a matter of fact, he kind of likes some of these things. But then we've had somebody from the realtor side, the selling side, suggest an improvement. Not that it's going to alter what ultimately needs to be done, but a timing issue. And I think it, I think it would be good for us to at least give Jenny an opportunity to take that one or two line items on there and see if it could be tweaked to still ultimately protect both the buyer and seller so that they know, but to not have it at this very starting instant where they could be in violation of an ordinance that they've got no clues there. So there's got to be, there's got to be some mechanism there that, as Greg said, we can improve this a little bit or tweak it.
Mr. Chair, I have no objection to our attorney looking at it and bringing it back in a couple of weeks for us to.
Okay, that'd be good. Is that, does that meet the rest of the word? So, because, I mean, we don't, we're not under any time constraint to do this. I, he might be, but I'm not.
We won't tell you when it was supposed to be adopted, though. I know that, yeah.
All right. Well, I think as long as they know we're in the process, and I think we're ninety-eight percent there, Tim. I guess it's just a tweaking of a little language, I think, might, and maybe Jenny will come back and say, nah, maybe not, maybe we shouldn't. But then we'll live with that, too. All right?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, guys.
So this has been tabled for first meeting, depending on the support.
Yes, first meeting, may we have this back on the agenda? Okay? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're going to take a, we're running behind schedule, we're going to take a quick break here, and we'll be back. Okay, we'll reconvene our meeting here. Next on our agenda is Social Services Director Rhonda Porter, and you have multiple things to go over with us today. And not least is the request to fill a financial worker position.
Yes. Okay, so that piece did come out in your board packet, and that is, we do have a resignation of an employee that's been here. She was here just a year. She has decided to move on to other things, and so we're looking to replace her position.
Just after you go to train.
I know. Darn it. It's a lot of training, too. But she's still going to be. But she's still gonna be kind of within the human service system, she's gonna be working for a housing authority over in North Dakota. So we'll still work with her in some capacity, but I'm requesting to fill her position.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the position.
Second.
Okay, motion in the second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried. Next, Rhonda, we have the Volunteer Driver Medicaid Transports.
Okay, yes, thank you. This is, I did lay this on your chair, this was not in your packet, so I laid it on your chair. It looks like this, like this. Okay. This is in follow-up to a presentation we gave earlier this month on the Volunteer Appreciation Month, and you had asked about the no-load miles for our volunteer drivers, and what, you know, how many miles does that represent, that our drivers are agreeing to transport without getting reimbursed, as they had in the past? So this is kind of a lot of information, but I'll just walk you through it. So this is our activity for 2013, and the first column there, you'll see, we, this program served 217 individuals, so that's unduplicated. It might mean one individual had several trips, but it's 217 people. And along the left-hand side, you'll see the different types of transportation that gets approved for someone who is on Medicaid, and they need transportation assistance to those medical appointments. So there's, we have to categorize them in the different transportation modes. So the one that impacts the volunteer drivers is the first one there, it says MA access mileage, no vested interest. So this is a person who provides the transportation that doesn't have a vested interest in the individual receiving it. So, you know, the one under that where it says vested interest, that would be like a neighbor, a friend, family, that, that kind of thing.
So if this first one, like, just a no acquaintance?
Yes. Yep, yep. Or maybe it could be a provider, you know, that kind of thing. So then on the right-hand side, in the grayed-out area, I wanted to provide some information. So in 2013, of that $4,900, $4,600 of that were payments that went out to the volunteer drivers. So clearly, you can see, the majority of that category is our volunteer drivers. And what we looked at is, for a 12-month period of time, there was 817 miles that were unreimbursed for our volunteer drivers, that we considered that no-load part. So that's not included in, in the $4,600. So that was 817 miles. When we looked at the detail of that, 245 miles of that was coupled with, we do have a volunteer driver that does have some relatives in the city, so sometimes they agree to do a transport like that because they couple it with-
A visit.
A visit. So that is what happened in 2013. They went up ahead of time, had some personal time with their relatives, and then they picked up an individual at a medical facility there and brought them back. So they got paid for their trip back when the individual was in their vehicle, but not on the way there. So it works out in that way. The remaining mileage that was unreimbursed for our volunteer drivers was 572, and that basically is a volunteer driver's miles from their home to picking up the individual, and then dropping the individual off back to their home. So over a year period of time, that calculated to about 572 miles. And if we look at, if we decided as a county to pay for that out of county funds, just calculating that at the mileage rate of 56 cents, it'd be about $320. So that is what was unreimbursed for 2013. Now, it's important to remember that the MA access transportation is separate from all the other driving they do for social service clients, 'cause we pay them regardless of whether the person is in there or not. And that amount I just listed there was a little over $45,000. So a good chunk of those transports, we do pay them full mileage from their home and back.
So it's just this one?
It's just the MA access part. And, you know, we, we look at these, and, you know, like this one where it was coupled with a personal trip, you know, we certainly, if it's an MA access one, and we really feel a volunteer driver is the most appropriate, or the only transportation we could, would get, and we have a volunteer driver willing to do it, we might try to look at these scenarios where it's kind of a win-win for both. In situations where it's not, again, this is MA access, and I've been a little reluctant to subsidize Medicaid services because it, because of the volume. But, you know, maybe, maybe the board would want to allow me to use some discretion, that if there's a unique transport, and we really need a volunteer driver, and the mileage would just be unreasonable, that you'd allow me some discretion to approve on a case-by-case basis, if that makes sense, or continue as we've been doing.
John? What fund could we take this from if we were to approve it?
Well, we'd probably just take it out of our volunteer driver county funds.
Okay.
And like I said, in 2013, we spent forty, a little over $45,000. I believe we have a budget of $50,000 in there.
This is much less problem than I thought it was.
Yeah, yeah, and I think, yeah.
I mean, I thought, I thought it'd be much more than the 817 miles that's, you know, the-
Well, in years past, it would have been, because once they started not paying for the no-load, we're using other modes of transportation. So the volunteer drivers are getting less transports because of it, and I think they'd like to have more transports. But because of this, you know, we haven't relied on them for these long trips, because we know it's a burden, and we know we haven't been able to authorize it, so.
So if we started paying, paying it, do you think it would increase, again, the-
Well, I would not want our practice to change, because I think it could get quite substantial, and so we'd always wanna look at are there other options first? But if a volunteer driver makes sense, you know, we wanna go that way as well.
I think we, I mean, to me, the drivers, they have a right to get paid for their costs, and I would, I would certainly like to see this, this being paid, even if it's a very small amount here, I think it's, it's important.
So the portion that, the portion that we're talking about here, in Commissioner Everett's question to you was, you know, if we did pay this, could there be more of it? Would, by, by that, meaning more, would some of these others go, shift from that category to the MA access category?
Well, they could, but I'm kinda thinking, the way the policy is written, we always look at, first of all, we're always gonna look at the vested interest opportunity. So if they're on Medicaid, and they have their own vehicle, use that, and in those, in the vested interest category, they get paid 20 cents a mile. So it might be a neighbor, or it might be a grandma who's willing to provide the transportation, and then they can submit a voucher for those miles at 20 cents. So the financial workers are always looking at that first. Is there a vested interest transportation? If that's not an option, then they would kinda go down the list in terms of most cost-effective. And generally, the volunteer drivers would have been somewhat under that vested interest in terms of cost-effectiveness. But because of that no-load piece, they've gone, then they may go to other situations, which is unfortunate, and which is one of the things we try to tell our state, is that in the Medicaid program, they could be saving money if they would invest in the no-load part, because overall, it would be cheaper transportation. So, but, but our workers would continue their protocol, it's just that right now, they haven't relied as much on the volunteer part, because they know that no-load piece exists.
If we don't use a volunteer driver, do we use one of our own people? Then we have to pay salary for that, or?
Not in the MA access. On the social service side, that would be the case, but in there, on that side, it's not an issue, because we pay them irregardless. But on the MA access side, we, we work to arrange transportation the most cost-effective manner. So they're getting to their appointments one way or another, but we're selecting kinda from a variety of options.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we authorize Rhonda to make that determination and pay if it's, if it's important for, for the transport.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same.
Okay. I think maybe the one thing I'll do on this is if we, maybe, starting May 1st, that would give us, and take a look at it in maybe two months, to see what that looks like. Our practice of referral won't change, but we can look at it on a case-by-case.
All right. Next, we have the Foster Care Appreciation Proclamation and Report.
We do, and I have guests for that piece, so. Okay, you have Gail Burnside, our foster care licenser with us, and Scott Manson, the supervisor in that unit. So I'm actually gonna turn it over to them, who's taking it. You, Gail? Or is it Scott? They're gonna start, okay.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Due to May being Foster Care Appreciation Month, we would like to acknowledge the important contribution foster care providers make in meeting the needs of Clay County children and families. And just some information about our current foster care providers, we currently have 34 child foster care homes, and there are seven that are currently in the process of being licensed. Of these 34, there are four relative foster care homes that are licensed for specific children. And currently, we have 32 children placed in our, in our licensed homes, and approximately 24 children are provided respite care by our current foster care providers as well. So again, very, very grateful for these providers and the work that they do, and we would request that the attached proclamation be adopted.
Will the board like me to read this proclamation?
Maybe we should, yeah.
Okay. I will read the proclamation here. Whereas the family serving as the primary source of love, identity, self-esteem, and support is the very foundation of our community, and whereas the foster parents provide an invaluable service to the children, youth, and families of Clay County, and whereas foster parents give generously of themselves to provide nurturing, safety, guidance, hope, and love in a safe, secure, and stable home, and whereas foster parents recognize the opportunity to help a child or youth and their family in ways that will influence them and become a supportive and lasting presence for the remainder of their lives. And whereas foster kinship and adoptive families who open their homes and hearts to children whose families are in crisis play a vital role in helping children and families heal and reconnect, thereby launching young people into successful adulthood. And whereas dedicated foster families frequently adopt foster children, resulting in a greater need for more foster families. And whereas May 2014 Foster Care Appreciation Month in Clay County is an appropriate opportunity to thank the families who embrace the often thankless responsibility of providing a home and family to children in need of affection, love, and security, and to support the efforts of those who dedicate their time to children in and leaving foster care. Now therefore, we, Clay County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May as Foster Care Month in Clay County, and we call upon all of our citizens to recognize the contributions made by our foster families throughout our county. We also urge all citizens to come forward and to do something positive that will help change a lifetime for, a lifetime for children and youth in foster care. In witness there, we have heretofore set our hands and cause the official seal of Clay County on this 22nd day of April 2014.
I'm moving to approve the proclamation.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Colored want to sign?
This is the one?
And then we'll take, Gail's gonna copy that for our providers and send that out along with a little gift to our providers in the month of May.
Gail didn't get a chance to make her speech.
That's all right. Scott, it's actually a good time. Thank you.
All right, next we have the Disability Services Presentation.
Okay. As you know, Lori Young is gonna be leaving us this month after 37 years.
She's far too young for that.
So as a gift, as a gift to her, I've asked her to come before you and talk about her, her unit, her departing words of wisdom that we had to get down on paper before she was, right? And this is Holly Warner. Holly Warner is replacing Lori in her position as supervisor for a disability unit, so. They're excited to be here. So I'm gonna run the Praxima, but Lori's gonna steal the show today for her last week of work.
This is the last round.
It is, yeah.
Welcome here, and congratulations on your ears.
Thank you, it's exciting. Hope to get through this. As you, well, she's already behind us.
Oh, there we go.
The, these are just the, the broad points that we'll be going over today, the agenda. This slide, I think you've seen before in other unit presentations, so this one focuses on the disability unit, the people that we have in the unit, a little bit about their general category, and that Holly will be the supervisor as of Monday.
And this, this thread kinda keeps changing with all the movement and change, so each time I have found that when we were doing a presentation, there's pretty significant changes in this.
Yeah, yeah. Of those 14 staff, they're, they're, they're in different broad categories. So we have four social workers who are considered the adult CADDY case managers. And those, those social workers manage that CADDY program for, for people with disabilities that meet that level of care, that do not have a developmental disability. And we have one dedicated assessor. We went to this model this past January in preparation for our Min Choices, and I'll touch on that and explain that a little bit more as we get into the presentation. But we're having one assessor do all of the initial referrals for our long-term care consults at this point. And then she does the assessment, brings it to our team, eligibility is determined, and then it's assigned to an ongoing caseworker, case manager. We have one special needs basic care service coordinator, we do the Medica contract, and that's that managed care piece, service coordination. And she works real closely with the other social workers that provide the waiver case management. We have one CADDY program case aide, she does basically the majority of the data entry into our MMIS system for screening documents and service arrangements. And then the seven case managers for persons with a developmental disabilities, and those workers include, or manage all of the waivers we're gonna be talking about, and some other general DD service area service. Real briefly, some of the state and federal programs that the social workers administer and monitor are these, the home and community-based services waivers, and I'll, I'll break those down a little bit later on as well. And there's seven that Minnesota has by federal approval to offer in Minnesota. Rule 185 is a general DD case management, they're not on a waiver, but they have developmental disabilities and have a case manager assigned to them. ICF DD group home, that's that institutional level of care. And then I, I think we have maybe five or six folks in, in ICF DD group homes. We don't have a group home in, in Clay County, there're a couple in Becker and the metro area. Consumer Support Grant, Family Support Grant, again, the long-term care consultation, and once we, that rules over into Min Choices, the Min Choices assessment, we'll do the assessment for those currently having a PCA, Personal Care Tenant Assessment, a DD Service Screening, and the other waiver eligibility. Personal Care Attendant Assessment, a DD service screening, and the other waiver eligibility. Day Training and Habilitation, which is our vocational program and services for people with disabilities. We have a county-funded respite program. We have a semi-independent living services, a SILS program. We have one worker assigned specifically for that. Early Intervention, which is a worker we have assigned to work closely with the school, the birth-through, seven, eight group, as new families come into the area, into the service area because they have a child born or adopted or assessed to have some kind of a special need or disability. Public guardianship, we provide public guardianship to, I didn't do another count, but maybe five or six folks under public guardianship as well. And our special needs basic care coordination, again.
So, all kind of visual for this slide is for you to get a sense of the multitude of programs that just one unit manages.
Each with a little different aspect to it, of course, to...
What is the ICF?
Used to be called more as like the group homes, you know, where they have like six, seven, ten, twenty people with disabilities living in one...it's an institution, the old institutions.
So, it stands for Intermediate Care Facility for Developmental Disability, right?
Yes, licensed through Health Department, actually.
Okay. So, we've got five or six, you said, in different counties or in different parts of the state?
In probably...oh, in the ICF.
Is that the ICF, or was that the other one that you were talking about?
About five or six folks.
That we...
We're still responsible for them as a county.
You know, they don't live there.
Right, right. Because they did when they entered service, and they're still a resident, financial responsibility for them, even though they're placed in another county.
So, does at any point they belong to the other county, or they...
Not while they're in services, not while they're in the institution. If they would move out and live independently, then that responsibility would change, but...
Okay. Thank you.
These are...this is a list of the Home and Community-Based Services that we have, the waivers that we have. The very first one and the very last one, the Alternative Care and the Elderly Waiver are managed outside of the Disability Service Unit in the aging or the over sixty-five age group. Brain Injury Waiver, real briefly, it's probably very obvious, those are folks that have a traumatic brain injury, some kind of a brain injury and need that level of care, that would be eligible for the waiver services. Community Alternative Care, the CAC waiver, those are folks that are at risk of hospitalization or that level of care of a hospital. And Social Services is the lead agency for the CAC waiver, but because it's so medically involved, we have partnered with Public Health, and they provide a nurse that would be the primary case manager, and we assign a social worker, and so they co-case manage those families, those folks. CAC, CADDY, Community Alternative for Disabled Individuals, those are those persons that have disabilities and require a level of care such as in a nursing facility, and that can include mental health, physical disability, medical condition. And we do have some folks with developmental disabilities that are served under the CAC waiver as well, or, excuse me, CADDY waiver as well. DD waiver, those are folks that have the developmental disabilities and require that level of care, such as in the institution that we talked about, the ICFDD.
Who would somebody with early Alzheimer's, for instance, be? Is that...
You're on your own.
I'm afraid of him.
We'll screen you. Call and take and make an appointment.
But that is kind of the level, the process. Say, and maybe we could take an individual with a disability. Say you have a child that has significant physical disabilities, or maybe Down syndrome or autism, and you're calling, looking for some help, and your child or adult child lives in a home. If you were to call our agency and ask for services, one of the first things that we would be doing, correct me if I'm wrong, is what's now called, well, Long-Term Care Screening, or now it's going to be MIN Choices. So, that's where that MIN Choices comes in. So, a person would, one of our staff would come out and do the MIN Choices screening and determine what level of service, what eligibility the child might have in terms of services. And then there's, depending on the different waiver or service that you might be eligible for, there's menus of services that could go along with that. Some of that might be maybe respite in your home, if you're a caregiver of someone that has significant needs, or homemaking, or, you know, independent living skills.
Yep, technology, just to maybe help monitor, make sure the oven stove isn't left on, or alarms in case, you know, you wander, and need that supervision, so...because they are waivers, and so the CMS provides approval for Minnesota to offer these waivers, but they...so they all have some similarities, but they also have some little different nuances as well, because they're getting at that different target population, that different level of care. But each one has their own eligibility requirements. They all have their own little different funding parameters and limitations. Each has their own service menus. They may be similar, or they might be a similar service called something a little bit different. And then there are some drastic differences in what's available as well, and their own policies and procedures to follow. So, what each waiver does have is we, it has to be within that allowable budget that is provided to the counties. The intent is always to avoid that institutionalization, and with the outcome to have greater independence in the community, and then follow all the different guidelines and rules and policies from the federal government to the state, and then our own county policies and how we complete our daily work. The next slide, in a quick summary, because we, these are Medicaid dollars coming from the federal government and state-funded, there's a lot of responsibility that the case managers and the county has in determining eligibility, which waiver they might be eligible for, or even that they are not eligible for, and then monitor, develop the service plan, authorize those individual services at a frequency not to exceed or within that year, and then monitor the health and safety, help people access, kind of walk through some of those processes, because they are very complicated. MIN Choices, once we go to the MIN Choice Assessment, it's anticipated that that could take three, four hours for an assessment, which may take a couple of different home visits. Monitor the performance of the providers, make sure that the service plan is being, the services are being delivered, and they're having that, the outcome, the desired outcome for that person. Eligibility, especially that CADDY waiver, seems to kind of ebb and flow. They may not be eligible at a time when they, outside of the scheduled reassessment. And so, maybe they lost their MA, maybe they lost their certification for disability, and which, when that happens and that causes funding problems, that we have to be on top of that because we don't want them not to continue to have services they need, or not to have, you know, the providers not get paid for the services that they have already delivered. And then work with the state in making sure that there's, you know, providers available and meet their criteria that we have in place for them to provide that particular service and to enroll in the service for that particular service, and work to enhance those services. Outside of the waiver, we reviewed some of those other program areas. They determine the Rule 185 eligibility for the developmental disabled population, and that's making, going through an assessment, looking at their IQ or related conditions checklist to see that they meet that developmental disability criteria, and providing the social work and case management ongoing for that. We have state-funded Family Support Grant for families at ninety-five, a little over ninety-five thousand for the year, and that's about thirty-two grants that are available for families. The Consumer Support Grant is, real briefly, it's, if a person is authorized for a PCA service, Personal Care Attendant, and that's a state plan service, regular MA can pay for that. What they can do is, there's an option under that program where a person can, lack of a better word, maybe cash out their state, the state funding piece of it. We can't do anything with the federal part of it. But they can utilize those state funds that otherwise would pay for the PCA, and they can purchase their own services. With it, it's more consumer-driven, it's more consumer-focused, person-centered, and they may be able to purchase those services at a lower rate than maybe an agency can provide them, and they have those options. County-funded Day Training and Habilitation, that's for our DD population, for their vocational services, and that's for those folks that are not on a waiver. You can pay for it on the waiver, but we can also pay for it for some of those folks who do not meet that level of care of a waiver, but still have those needs. Support and employment is kind of under that same criteria, but it's not necessarily for support or for developmental disability people, but people with disabilities who need that little support and ongoing training to maintain, to secure and maintain a job in the community. Again, our county-funded respite, our independent semi, our SILS program and services, the amount of money that we get from the state and what the county funds are utilized. Guardianship petitions for county-funded services, outside of the public guardianship, we will, when there's needed, a guardianship and work and do those petitions for people, either have a family member that is agreed to be their guardian or a contracted vendor. And then there's always those county initiatives or community partnerships, the collaborative, the interagency committees that workers are involved with. And I already touched on the worker who partners with those early intervention programs and families coming into services for the first time with their children.
Do we ever turn people down if there aren't enough funds available, or...
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Sometimes we have waiting lists, or we've maybe not been able to authorize a full package of service, but maybe limited hours of service, depending on the budget available.
Are you referring specifically to a particular program?
No, I just see the different funds you got there.
Yeah.
Looking at, whether we exceed that.
Yeah. Right now, we do have a waiting list for our SILS program. There are people waiting for that service.
So, we don't help them out, or...
Well, they probably have a case manager assigned to them. Maybe they get some county-funded DT and H, the vocational program. Maybe they're just looking at moving out of their parental home in the next year or so, so we get them on the list, so they're, hopefully, when they're ready to move, that we have that service available. But we do have some folks that would like to start that program right now, and we haven't been able to do that.
Thank you.
I see on the one page that says services authorized under each waiver program, the first one is to be within the allowable budget.
Right, right, right. And we have been in a tough spot with those budgets before. Right now, we're doing well. They're aggregate budgets. The DD waiver has got one aggregate budget, and then the CAC, CADDY, and Brain Injury waiver are combined into another aggregate budget. So, we get those funds available to us, and then we have to manage all the services and the people eligible for those programs. The waivers are not an entitlement program, so if we don't have the funds, or we don't have at that level that the consumer wishes to have, we can't authorize them.
How do we get the, if we would want to, how do we get it increased? I mean, if we don't have enough funds available, do we...
The waiver, again?
I mean, from federal funds, or do you request these funds, or how is it determined that you get, first of all, it's ninety-five thousand, I guess. How does that determine? We just get so much money from the federal, or is that...who determines that ninety-five? Or any of them, I don't care which one you take.
Okay. Well, they're all kind of different.
Excuse me.
The waivers are, you know, the state, the state gets the federal dollars for that.
Okay.
And then they, through their wisdom and formulas, decide...
What do we know was right?
Which county gets so much, Becker gets so much, Clay gets so much. And it's, you know, we've been having, the waivers were started, I think, in, oh, my, eighty-seven? I might not be totally correct on that date, but close. And so, throughout the years, you know, every year, we maintain that, and then they give us additional dollars so we can access for new people coming into the, into that service area. Otherwise, if people leave services, we, those dollars are kept in that budget, so we can serve somebody else coming on.
And maybe just to clarify, the Medicaid waiver programs that Lori talked about, the six that are listed on Slide Six, you know, again, those are all Medicaid dollars. Those dollars are separate from what's on this slide here. So, in those Medicaid programs, the social worker will authorize the services for an individual. They'll have a provider. The provider will bill Medicaid and get paid. That does not funnel through our books. And that's probably, we looked at some of that, and around thirty-four, thirty-five million. So, it's Medicaid services going out to lots of folks, but it doesn't funnel through our accounting. These programs that's listed here do, they show up in our budget, and we monitor those. There's a mixture of state and county and federal funds here, so they're kind of separate in that way.
They're not Medicaid dollars.
Right.
Okay.
Complicated programs.
Okay. So, caseloads between the waivers, outside of those, the AC and the elderly waiver, we have about three hundred and, excuse me, six hundred and thirty-five consumers served under the waiver programs right now.
So, when I talked about those millions of dollars in Medicaid, that's these six hundred and thirty-five-plus people. It's probably more than that, because we don't have our elderly waiver in there.
Right, elderly waivers, yeah.
Yeah. So, it might be people in nursing homes, might be people in, you know, the adult foster care settings.
What kinds of nursing homes?
Right.
So, we've got six hundred and thirty-five people, all Clay County residents that are...
That are served under the waivers that we do.
Okay, thank you.
And then about eighty-five consumers served in that other slide we talked about, outside of the waiver areas, the state and county dollars. The average caseload is about six consumers per social worker. They earn revenue based upon their case management activities, and that was just over a million dollars for 2013. The SNBC Special Needs Basic Care, her caseload right now is eighty-seven consumers, and we did agree at the next expansion to take ten more consumers, so she'll go to ninety-seven. And she also earns revenue under that contract with Medica for her workload and her service coordination. And then also the grants that come into the county, the two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, and then the four hundred and forty-six thousand that we allocate in county-funded programs.
So, just to clarify on this slide as well, the revenue earned, that little over one million there, is revenue that all of the staff earn based on serving those six hundred and thirty-five consumers, the work that they do, the case management, the coordination, the screening, the work with the providers, the authorizing the services, monitoring, all of that kind of stuff. So, they record all their activity when they do that, and the county gets reimbursed for administering these Medicaid programs.
The counties are audited or reviewed for their management, and especially for the waivers. The federal government goes to the states, and I'm sure you're in compliance with all our requirements and the waiver plan that we approved. And so, in order for the state to do that to the federal government, the state comes to the counties and says, okay, you know, show us how you're meeting these requirements. And so, in 2013, August of 2013, we have such a review, and they plan on doing that every three years, get out to the counties, eighty-seven counties within that three-year cycle. So they're on site here, they bring a cadre of people, like four, four and a half days, they're on site. There's a lot of activity that goes on, they look at, I think it was this last time, they wanted to review ten percent of the case files for each of the waivers. So they go through those case files, page by page. They also had some provider surveys, and they sent our providers, saying, how's Clay County doing, how's your relationship, how's it going? As well as to consumers, are you satisfied? Do you know who the case manager is? You know, how's it going for you? They also met with the case managers as a group and say, well, how, you know, what works well in your county, what isn't, what we could do differently, and collected that information. They had a lot of data that they were able to collect, and then they compared our data with similar counties, and I'm not even sure who, who they paired us with or compared us with, but we had our data as compared to these similar counties and how we came out. It was, it was a very good review, it was very positive. They really identified the strengths that we felt we already knew about, and that's that we worked very well together. We worked very hard to address issues, there's, you know, the paperwork pieces is, is just outstanding, you know, what needs to be done. And, you know, there's some gaps here, gaps there, we didn't get a signature page there. And so, there was some of that, not significant, not that, that, you know, deterred anybody from getting the services that they required, but it was a piece of paper. And so, they really recognized that we worked hard to come into those compliances. Case managers, they build relationships with their consumers and with the providers. We work well together, we collaborate across our individual units, adult mental health, our child protection units, as well as with public health and other county departments. They saw that we, as a county, we try to put in some, some supports to assist our case managers, some processes that help them do their daily work. We work with our providers in that same kind of effort, and that the case files themselves, the paperwork pieces, were overall very, very positive, and they were well organized and complete. And there's always a few things that we can approve upon, and one of those, and this isn't, was in particular, or just specific to Clay County, was, as I looked at other counties and their waiver reviews, it was a pretty consistent theme across many of the counties, and that is working with people to assess their vocational abilities a little bit better. Along with that, making sure that we have more community work, you know, a good paid wage for the folks, so that they're not subbing on wage or on claims, but they have real work and make a living that they can help support themselves. We are still, even though we've made some gains and a lot of progress, as a county, we still have more of a reliance on that corporate level of care. The shift staff, the corporate foster care shift staff. We've worked very hard, we developed more of a family foster care system, we've developed some technology, so people have rented their own apartment, have a provider that's assigned to them to monitor, come in every once in a while, we have that technology piece that they're able to, to, to look at and say, you know, hey, we're, we have some concerns here, you haven't been taking your medication, it shows that you haven't taken all your medications today, how come? Can we make sure we do that? A way to help people document, again, at their six-month visits, how things are going. They make their visits, but we wanted to beef up a little bit how they monitor, or how they document that. And always, we have, we do have a diverse population, from different cultures, different languages, and it's, you know, it's always more of a challenge to meet those folks, means that don't speak the same language or have a same, a different culture that's coming from. Hot topics, these are, these are in the works yet, and probably will be for a little while. We talked about Min Choices. We went to that dedicated assessor model in preparation for our Min Choice launch, because it's a different way of doing business, and it's, it's a little of a struggle to go for case managers to be assigned a person that they haven't met yet, haven't, haven't developed that final service plan for. And that part is, is a real, came from a federal push, that you need to separate that eligibility piece, that gatekeeping piece, from the case management role, and so that's why that's happening. Min Choices was supposed to happen for us in March, then in April, then not before May, and now we're getting a brand-new schedule for launching. Sometime in 2014 is definite as we have it today. Rate management structure and system, that's been a new way of doing our business, we've had, it's been like a negotiations process. Under the waiver, there's, some are set rates by the state, but others are like, well, county, you figure it out with your providers. And that has changed to a rate management structure. So we have, collect information, plug it into the system, and that system gives us a rate. It's been some growing pains and some adjustments for providers, as well as for the county, try to figure that out. In addition to that process, in April, there was a legislatively mandated one percent cost of living for providers, so that again was a rate adjustment. And then evidently, I think it's passed, or will be passed anyway, another COLA or cost of living, pay increase for childcare workers, five percent coming in July. Moratorium on Corporate Foster Care, I think we've talked about that in another meeting with a group that wanted to develop some corporate foster care beds, and we are, we, the state determines our new developments and is holding us to a capacity, again, to force us, to allow us maybe, to develop some other programs and supports and services for folks that, that is not quite that expensive. And I've talked, I talked a little bit about, there are other models of service delivery, use of technology, the host home, that's a family home, that is under the umbrella of an agency, but it's, it's not considered corporate care, it's family foster care. New rules on the behavior support planning, there's a new two forty-five D licensure, all their waiver providers had to go through a re-enrollment. Services that were not licensed before now had to be licensed, and that's, that's been kind of a struggle to get everybody on board, and new paperwork needed to be done and filed by a certain time, and if there was a delay in that, there's a delay in the payment. And sometimes you don't know that until we go into the service agreement and want to add a new service or a new amount of service, and we get an edit saying that provider isn't approved for that particular service. Well, we know they, they have been, and they will be, but there's some, an edit that comes up because they haven't finished all that paperwork piece, and so providers can't get paid until that's been done. That's causing a little frustration and anxiety. And then, well, I guess we talked about, also with the behavior support planning, there's some new rules in place that, for folks that have high behavioral needs, some aggressions, some property destruction, under, under review and with approved plans, providers could, their staff could do some behaviors, behavior interventions, those, a lot of those processes and interventions are now prohibited, and so we're trying to figure out how to keep those people safe, how to keep staff safe, without utilizing some of past practices that we've been able to have in the past.
Cool. Listening to all of that, I had to wonder, Holly, do you really?
Holly, you ready for?
It'll go fine.
I don't know what Laurie's gonna do with all of her knowledge, now that she's not kind of come to work every day.
Trying to get it out of my head.
Lot of stuff, as you can see, there's a lot of stuff going on just in this unit, lot of initiatives through DHS, lot of things still hanging out there and developing, but a lot of good work, so.
Well, Laurie, thank you for your, for your many years of service for Clay County.
It's been a, it's been a pleasure, it's been great.
You've done a terrific job for us, and we're, it's kind of a, one of those things where it's happy to see you go for what you want to do, but we're sad that you're leaving.
Yeah, thank you.
But we wish you well.
Thank you.
And Holly, you're jumping into the fire.
I'm well aware. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the Agasney Regional Trails Update. And we've got Gordy Beggan, am I pronouncing that right?
Morning.
Morning.
Morning. Appreciate you opportunity to be here. My name is Craig Gounis, I'm a local county commissioner, and I took over as the board chairman of the art trail when Jerry retired. Actually, he went a year after he was done here, and anyway, I was elected here in January, so, I don't know, Gordy, you want to start, or I want you to start?
Go ahead.
In nineteen ninety-two, the trail was actually initiated, it was done with LCMR money. The owners are the three counties. We've been, we went through the nineties in pretty good shape, from what I understand. Gordy's been the trail administrator for a number of years, and he's been there, at least since inception, am I correct?
Yes.
And anyway, here in the early nineties, early two thousands, I was elected to head a reorganization. And with that, at the time, you know, we had, we had some commissioners that had been there a long time, and we don't have that luxury right now as far as the history. We felt it was important to come down here today, to kind of bring you up to date as to where it came from, where it's at, and possibly where it's going. We've run into issues here lately, we got fifty-two miles of North Side Trail, water drains from the east, goes to the west, to the river, so that's caused some issues. A lot of that property was grazing and CRP, that's all changed. It's, it's production, crockland right now, a good part of it. Well, that causes issues with, you know, encroachment and different things that, you got neighbors now that are trying to be productive with the land that's being farmed. Well, in the last few years, we've done a lot of things there with the bridges, the trail itself is, we've done some things to that. The part that has been tough, very difficult, the last three years has been some of the expenses that we've incurred. We put four bridges in there, we got, we got DNR money to do that, and that went fine until the end. We ended up with, the contractor had till the end of August to have the job done, he moved out in April, we felt very strongly that with mobilization costs coming back up from the cities, that he probably wouldn't be back. We held the retainage, and sometime, we don't know exactly, but end of July or August, he'd hired a local contractor to come in and finish the site work on the ends of the three bridges. Well, it ended up, that was a wet August, and he couldn't get the work done, penalty started September one, and it ended up that that contractor hasn't been paid by the company that we had contracted with. We've still got, you know, the retainage, we haven't, we haven't been contacted in, what, two years?
It'll be coming two years, yes, but that independent contractor had gotten paid half of the, of his work, so he's still owed half of his work, which we, in my opinion, are not responsible for. We did not hire him, he was the subcontractor to the main contractor. And the work that was not completed was determined by our engineer, it wasn't my determination or the board's determination, it was a determination of Ericson Engineering, our engineering firm out of Minneapolis. So that's why the retainage was held back, it wasn't a board decision on the work not being completed. So it was that advice of our engineering firm.
Well, anyway, we're, we've actually been spending some of that retainage there, I think if you look at the second page, which you've given there, we've got running reimbursable charges there that we, as the administrative body, have been paying. And in trying to go, get through this, we've got some legal client, attorney-client privilege discussion, out of that, he asked me, he said, why are you paying it? I looked at him, this was just a few weeks ago, I said, what do you mean? He said, you don't own it. He said, the three counties own it. And he said, they should be the ones paying it, you're the administrative body, so you look at, if you look at that, what we've paid, and we've got another bill from an attorney that is there now, we got a board meeting next Monday. There's a lot of money there that we paid that, basically, we got no way to get reimbursed, that's how we operate, is off reimbursements, we don't have a real funding stream to try and maintain this. So we've met with the DNR in the last two years, in trying to, and they've done some things to help us, we're not there yet. We had a meeting last week, we threw out some options to them that basically, take it over, join us in a joint powers, where we got the ability to have the Attorney General, the enforcement from, you know, the DNR, with, because right now, we don't have any enforcement on the trail. And other, and if the county's elected, shut it down. And that's where it's at, we're, we need about ten thousand dollars right now from each county, to get back to where we need to be. And the individuals that we met with can't make that decision, it has to St. Paul, but trying to throw out some options, because ultimately, it'll be the three county boards that'll determine what the fate is here. And.
If I may interject here, that sheet where it says, costs not covered by grants, that's from July one of thirteen to December thirty-first of thirteen. I distributed this to my board members, you know, I've been telling them, we can't spend our retainage dollars because we currently have an offer on the table to the contractor to settle the dispute. And we do have, we're about twenty-eight thousand dollars into that thirty-five thousand dollar retainage. Yes, we have some reimbursement coming back, but we're about fifteen thousand dollars into that, if you take this ten, and that other sheet I handed out was about thirty-four, we're at about fifteen thousand for legal issues. And the, there's legal issues prior to July one of 2013. So handing these out, I just felt that we needed to see this, and there is no way to recoup these costs, because under the state DNR manual, they have allowable costs, and surveys, abstracts, disputes and so forth are not reimbursable. And we were doing fine till these landowners decided they were going to take us the task on the boundaries, because in the past, we get reimbursed for the work I do as trail administrator, if it's an administration side of it, we get ninety percent back, and ten percent is paid by the board. If we do construction, sixty-five percent is paid by the DNR, and thirty-five is paid by the board, or out of our reimbursement funds. Normally, I take, when I turn in for reimbursement, legally, I can take four board members per month for two hours plus mileage, and some other things, I donate back, and we've been afloat. But when we start throwing fifteen thousand dollars worth of legal issues into it, and we can't reimburse it, you know, we're done. And I, like I said, I handed this out in December, and I told my board last month in the March meeting, we've got to close, we've got to put a sign up at each end of this trail, because. And I, like I said, I handed this out in December, and I told my board last month, in the March meeting, "We've got to close, we've got to put a sign up at each end of this trail, because we're in deficit spending real bad here." And if that contractor comes with that offer on the table and says, "I'll accept it," we don't have the money to pay him. And, you know, what's the use of running this thing down the tubes all the way? Let's stop before we get to that point, and that's where the counties come in. We, we need your support, and if you come to one of our board meetings, the same people that are criticizing for us defending the land are the very same people that are taking us the task on it. They're the only ones that come to the meeting, and they complain because we're doing the wrong thing, spending taxpayers' dollars, but yet, they're the ones that we're in a lawsuit with, so I don't understand that neither. Over a 30-foot piece of ground in the bottom of a ditch. And that doesn't sound like much, but I'm speaking now as a resident of Minnesota, and someone who licensed snowmobiles in the state, and four-wheelers, and Rangers, and I've got sons and grandchildren too, speaking as a resident, not as trail administrator of this organization. But when I pay my license and my trail pass to the DNR, we're a dedicated account, which means the monies that go to put the trail together come from the licensing part of it. And, and a portion of the non-refundable gas tax. When I pay that, I expect that money to be put into the trails, and when I go on that trail, I expect that trail to be the way it's supposed to be. That's where we need to protect our boundaries, because where they're farming up against it, they're mowing it flat like a golf course, you could just all ride on the highway. So, what's the use of even being on the trail or having it there? So, as a user, I expect that from the Agassi Recreational Trail Board to provide me with a good, usable trail. So, you know, I'm, it's kind of a double-edged sword for me, and frankly, I'd have been gone a long time ago. My, like Craig said, I've been in this since day one. And I've put my heart and soul into this thing, and I'd have been gone a long time ago if it wasn't for that. Because frankly, I don't need this headache or problems, and I don't, I just don't get it, why that 30 feet of land is so precious in the bottom of a ditch. And they mow right up to the trail, there's no snow on there, so when I come with my snowmobile, it's like riding down a gravel road. Or if you're, our trail is for snowmobiles, ATV, equestrian, bikers, hikers, bird watchers, and we've seen them all out there. And we've had people from all over, I've gotten calls out of Kentucky, South Dakota, Montana, everybody's got relatives up here, and they come up for an Easter weekend or something, and they want to ride the trail. And it's our obligation to provide them that trail they expect when they pay their license or their non-resident license fee to ride that trail.
Something else that we weren't prepared for, that had never happened before, we had some fire calls that we had to pay for. I think one of the communities, 750, I think there's some that are 3, for the first three hours, that that's totally unreimbursable. We ended up with ditch assessments in Norman County, that, we worked that out now at the DNR, but they, we ended up paying one of them in 12, because we couldn't get, by the time we had negotiated with them a year ago, it was too late for their fiscal year. So, we ended up with a ditch assessment somewhere in that $2,400, $2,500 range, that, there again, we're the administrative body of this thing, not the owner. And this is where we're, and we can't get anything back. You know, that's money that we've actually taken out of retainage dollars to keep this thing floating. And when you look at the scenario, I've talked to the Secretary of Treasury at length, of where we've been and where we need to go. And I, depending upon what we can do, what the board's elect to do, but it's possible to run this thing. I, I think it's the smoothest if we can get the DNR involved with us, with it. There may have to be a, some years, we wouldn't need any money, some years, we may need something, as far as appropriation and something to run. I think a lot of, well, up until lately, we haven't had an issue. And it's just been, when you look at the, the issues that have came up, that we haven't had in the past. We're unable, unable to deal with it, because you don't have a revenue stream to pay. Even if you got a $1,500 culvert that needs to be replaced, we've got to come up with $150 bucks. And we've been doing it out of mileage and verdiums, and it doesn't work when you start getting $10,000 attorney fees and stuff, we don't have it. And so, it's tough, you know, Frank has been there a little over a year, and we've got another commissioner from Norman that's got the same amount of time. So, you don't have all the history, I, I'm just in my sixth year on it, but we felt very, very, you know, we had to get down and talk to the boards, so that you know exactly where this is at, questions, and we're certain here to answer them for you. If we can't, we'll get it back to you, but it can't continue on the way it is. Something needs to change here, and you can't run something like this without any money, and so.
I handed out some of the damage that's been done, as you can see there on that very first page, where they're mowing, our trail would be off to your right, and off to the left, he's an organic farmer, and that's his soybeans there. But yet, he mows our trail flat, and I haven't, because of privileged information, I believe he's using it for a buffer zone and getting paid for it, and that's why he keeps mowing it flat. As an organic farmer, you need a buffer strip, and that's why it's mowed. We, and he says it's because of drainage. We did enter into an agreement with him and another gentleman, that they would mow the bottom 15 feet of the ditch, the very bottom, one pass with the mower. That was fine for the first pass, but, and it was on a yearly agreement, it had to be revisited every year. And the second year, there was, they never came before the board, it was never brought up, but yet, they mowed the whole thing flat again, in my opinion. And I have pictures of it.
Digging ditches here?
That, where that tape measure is, where, that's where our boundary is supposed to be, and this gentleman just went in and tore down all the poplar trees, dug a ditch, and I got there about halfway into the process, and I told him, "You've got to stop, you have to stop this, this is art board, or art trail property." I could have just as well talked to that computer for all the good it did. The gentleman that was running the hole, I've known him for years, he handed me his phone and says, "Here, you talk to the landowner." The landowner says, "I'm going to do what I want," more or less, and he did.
If, if, those are two issues that we're still facing. The smaller issues south of there, we're, we're dealing with it as we speak. The, the big issues where we've actually had damage, we've got one north of that, a couple miles, somebody dug a ditch on our property, that's probably, got to be close to what?
Two-thirds of a mile long, and the top is at least 40 feet across. And the land is owned by an established attorney, and he didn't know a thing about it. So, we need to take the land renter to court, because the owner says, "Yeah." He didn't, wasn't aware of it, he didn't know about it, he didn't give him permission to do it, but it was, it was done. So, how do you fight? I mean, I've farmed, owned farmland in northern Minnesota for years and years and years, and that fence line stays there. We respect each other's property. And, you know, in this day and age, there's not even a fence line establishing a boundary anymore. With, with the GPS, you've got a strip of grain here, and you've got a strip of grain here, and there's six inches between it, and this is mine, and this is his.
Something else that I think is very important here, when this was acquired in 1992, it was all done on a quitclaim deed from the railroad. Adverse possession, forfeitures.
Cool lands.
Yeah, it was done back in 1880s, 1906. So, we're trying to clear that up, and if you look, one of those bills is $3,900 for an abstract work. And there again, we haven't got reimbursed, but if you don't know who owns the property, now, we feel very strongly, we do, the DNR has indicated that.
Who's we?
The counties. Three counties. That basically, it'd be ours to defend, that, that establish who owns the property. And that's where we're at right now with this thing, is the fact that, when you look at how it was purchased back in the day, very unclear information. We've got an attorney working on it, it's in attorney-client privilege right now, so I can't really say too much here, but it ends up that we fully feel we can prove that we own the property. It's, we feel we're getting close, and that's all I can, so actually, all I know about that is coming from the attorney.
One of the things you may ask is, "Why is this so important?" We're the only regional trail system in northwestern Minnesota, that's why the DNR put money into this, to purchase it. That was LCMR money back in 91, 92. We've had state and federal grants, we get money from the federal government under the, under the federal transportation program. Each state in the United States is given so much of that money. In 2010, the Agassi Recreational Trail Board was awarded the national award, there's 10 awards given out each year. And in 2010, there was nine awards given out, and we got one of the awards for current construction and design. Senator Keith Langseth was very instrumental in making this happen under a bonding bill through the legislature. His vision of it, along with mine, and Jerry Wallers, who we, the three of us sat many times discussing this, you're probably aware of, they'd like to extend the Heartland Trail, which is by Walker to Park Rapids, they want to extend that coming this way. In, in the hopes that that does come to pass, we can connect to that trail along Highway 10. And this will go all the way to Crookston, and it'll make it a real connection in northwestern Minnesota. The board should probably, you know, and I don't, certainly don't want to tell you folks how to look at this, but if it was me, I wouldn't look at this trail any different than a county park. It's for public use, for public enjoyment, and there's a certain amount of money that, whether it's a park boundary or a trail boundary, I think it would need to be protected.
Have you fellows got questions for us?
Yeah. First of all, how, how wide is the, is the ownership for each side of the trail?
Well, it varies, depending on, you get up on the, by the Bergerson Nursery, if you know where that is. There was an old town there called Fleming at one time, that's 250 feet wide by half a mile long, is our right-of-way. Most of it is 50 feet from center, you get into some towns, you may only have 25 feet from center. You get out in the open country, it's 100 feet wide again, the right-of-way. And one thing you need to, and I didn't realize this till we looked into it, the ditch along the rail bed is not drainage. It is, and that's in the state statutes, it is simply a borrow to establish the rail bed. And that's where a lot of this confusion is coming in, and, and being a landowner, you know, I want to drain my land too, but everybody figures that's a ditch, a drainage ditch, and they can go in and clean it and tear out all the trees, as you saw, and, and treat it as their own without any consequences.
Do the farmers, some of them think that they own the land?
Boy, absolutely.
But, and how, and what proof do they have of that?
You know, I asked our attorney that, the fellow that's on the top of that page, because there was a snow fence put up the other day, first Saturday in April, actually. There was a snow fence put up saying you couldn't go here anymore. And that was right on the trail, blocked it off with a snow fence. I said, "How in the world can they, somebody just go out and put a snow fence up and say, 'You can't go here till you prove it's your land.'" And I said, "Can I go tear it down and say it's our land?" "Yeah," but he said, "You'll be running back and forth." He said, "When he lives there and you're 20 miles away, you'll get nothing else done but driving up and down the road." So, I don't understand that mentality neither.
Something, John, that I think is also important, I got nervous because we're covered under NCIT, we've got, you know, got to have a continuous trail. Well, at that point, you don't, if you don't have an easement or permit across somebody's land. So, I've been with the MinDOT, and I, we have to adopt something next Monday night at our board meeting, to go up to the district, whatever it is up in Bemidji, and then we'll run in their ditch so it's continuous, so it's a continuous trail. But we have to come off that, and, until we can determine here where this is at, because we've still got folks that are using the trail. I mean, there's ATVs that are using it probably every day. So, I was concerned about that, that we don't have, you know, exposure from the three counties. And I was assured, I talked to the attorney down there, Jennifer Wolf, and I talked to Gary Severson, who also works there at NCIT, and we just got to do it a reasonable amount of time, get that handled, so that we're back again with a full, continuous trail. So, we need to pass something actually at our board meeting next Monday night, and then get that up to her in Bemidji, and she's aware of this, that it'd be coming, so. That, that, just trying to ease some thoughts here, as far as if you got a concern about that, that we're, we're covered on that part. We've got, you know, we've got insurance after the clubs are done grooming at the end of March, I mean, we've got our own insurance through NCIT, and the only thing that changed that we've ever done is, we removed the airs and emissions, or not the, not the airs and emissions, the, took the workers' comp off for the board members, feeling that the risk was minimal walking in and out of the, you know, trying to save some money here, but, so anyway, that's where that part of it is at.
The one portion of the trail that Craig is talking about, where we got to go around to get MinDOT permission, that chunk was at the, at the property at Cyrie, Minnesota, north of Yulin, where Highway 13, 113 goes to Waban, where the old elevator was, that was owned by a private individual, and we had an easement with that individual, and he put up the snow fence and has pulled the easement now, so we'll just go in the road ditch. It's an inconvenience, but it ain't going to stop the trail, because it's, it's done all the time. But it makes it a little inconvenience, and he has a right to pull his easement. But this fellow that just goes, "Be like me going out here in the street out here and putting up a snow fence and saying it's my land till you prove you're on," is basically what's happening.
Well, we've got, I mean, it seems to me that this is, this is county property, three counties together, which makes it somewhat more difficult, because it's, you know, we have to agree to everything. But it seems to me that our county attorneys can represent us on whatever we're doing, since it's county property. And so, if there's a, you know, a lawsuit or whatever, we should have, we should have coverage there, we shouldn't have to go and hire another lawyer.
Well, what's happened, I can't speak for the other two, but I can speak for Polk. We're shorthanded, he's, I think the caseload's higher than Clay County, from what, what I've seen from our attorney's office. He's in court two weeks, and he's preparing two weeks. And we have a hard time running by, you know, different things, joint powers, to get him to do that. I, in a reasonable time, it can't be done. His, his criminal side is, and like I say, now we're shorthanded, we just agreed to hire another one here last week. So, you tell that, you know, we don't have anybody hired, we just started advertising, so the caseload is, we're running high. And actually, even our department heads have not been able to sometimes get the service, just strictly because of the caseloads that they have.
Can your attorney at least meet with the other two attorneys and, and figure out where we can go on this?
I would like to hope that, you know.
One of the things is that, under this type of, when we started this with the contractor, none of the county attorneys at that time were versed on construction law, so they advised us to seek outside counsel. One of the things that I'd like to explain too, is Clay County only owns five miles of this trail. And Norman owns, you know.
No, that's not correct, Gordy. All three of us own 50 kilometers together.
Well, just let me finish here, there's five miles in Clay County, and then there's a large portion in Norman, and a larger portion in Polk. But if you go to the joint powers agreement and the bylaws, it's all equal.
So Frank's made us for it.
And that took, you know, it took a little bit of time to determine that, but it, it's all, the counties are equal. And I asked Frank that, I said, you know, if, if there was all this lawsuit, nothing's happening in Clay County right now. It's mostly in, in Norman County.
I think.
You know, we'd like to help out Clay County on an equal basis.
I, I'm, my simple word here is I'm just completely baffled. I, I'm, my simple word here is I'm just completely baffled by, by this all. I sit here and hear that we're the owners collectively, three counties for all of this property. We have people going out of this property, just willy-nilly doing what they want, interfering with, with, with the trails. We have lawsuits going. There's a lawsuit on some construction with a bridge still or something. But how, my, what I'd like to know here is, I see some numbers here, what we currently owe. What other liabilities do we have out there? How is this thing raising and raising and raising in terms of expenditures to us? And, and, and how does it stop? How's, you know, I, so everybody who's going to go in there and contest the fact that our three counties own this land?
I see, I know.
That, that goes to the point where, guess what? That becomes, those become dollars that need to be spent to fight that. And you've said your county doesn't have a, a county attorney who's got any time to spend on it.
At this point.
Yeah. You know, and, and I'm, I'm very, very nervous about the dollars that are building on this and the potential liability. Do I, do I certainly want to see this trail stay viable, of course. But there, there just doesn't seem to be any good direction here, and, from what I'm hearing here, and what we need to do to get this resolved. And, you know, Frank's tried, tried to give us some reports on it, and we've listened to it. We know there's a problem. We've been told that we believe we are the owners of it, just as you say, the three counties. I, I don't have a problem with that. But if we are the owners, at some point in time, we need to put our foot down and say, those of you who are interfering with the land that we own, it's got to stop if this trail is to continue.
Yep, that's exactly what we're trying to do.
You know, but, but, but at, at some point in time, you know, I think early on in this thing, we got to, we either got to get this resolved, or we got to shut it down.
Mm-hmm.
Right? I think that was the first words, I think, that came out of your guys today. And part of that decision-making and part of it, I think, really is going to end up, needs to be in closed session, you know, especially when we're going to start talking about legalities here. But I want to know what Clay County's liability is in this thing going forward, to get this thing either shut down or going.
One of the, maybe I can answer that. In nineteen ninety-one, ninety-two, when the LCMR monies were granted, which was lottery dollars, there was a twenty-year contract established with the Agassi Recreational Trail that this would be a trail for twenty years. Since then, we've gotten more grants to put bridges in and to do improvements, and there's new twenty-year contracts. So the Agassi Recreational Trail Board represents the three counties that has this contract with the state. What the consequences of that would be is if it, to pull out, I, I really don't know.
Well, then we need to find out.
And I, well, to give it back to the DNR, they frankly don't want it, because they've got enough of their problems. But I agree with Kevin. We got to draw a line in the sand, and I think we stop it now and, and, you know, create this, you know, defense, I don't see any future problems. But if we don't draw this line in the sand and get into litigation, this thing could get way out of hand as far as dollars.
Well, I, you know, I, we can, we can go on in this all day, and I, I think there was a comment from the audience here that two wanted to talk, but, you know, my looking at this, and I, I think we need some, some assistance from, from our staff and from our attorneys here to help us determine what direction to go. And Brian, I, I certainly would request on, on behalf of, for Clay County, we need to, we need to dig into this. And, and, you know, we need to have our county attorney staff get involved with this, because the, this, this, I just, I just see this thing, the price is going up and up and up. And it's, you know, this can be a chain reaction in terms of different landowners. If one landowner sees, well, look at, he's getting away with it. And how many miles have we got of this?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two miles, and you got, you got two miles being torn up or whatever, just by some landowner thinking he's got the right to do it. What happens if that happens, start happening to the whole fifty-two-mile area?
There could be a hundred, a hundred and fifty.
We could potentially deal with all those losses. That's my point.
I honestly feel, truthfully, Kevin, that partnering, because Gordy's right, that they're not looking at adding new miles, the, the DNR, at this point. But if we could partner with them and have assistance to the Attorney General in this thing, to me, I, I don't see any other way to make this thing work personally. That's a personal opinion, from my point. But when you look at this, we, we've got an art trail to try and administer this. We've got no enforcement. We don't have the highway departments helping us. You know, we do it on a reimbursement, get a ninety-ten back. We don't have a full-time employee. You know, Gordy does what he can. And it makes it very difficult. We don't even have staff, you know? So usually, we end up having, one of the commissioners will have, one of the counties do something, whether we got to send out something or copies or whatever the case may be. And Gordy does what he can. And it, when you get into situations like this, if you can't prove who owns it, and you got difficulties, and that's exactly where we're at. And I do feel, in talking to our attorney, this thing is, is taking a, we're going to know who owns it. And, but when you look at those other two issues that we're, you were just referring to, you take something like that on with restoration, court costs and all that, that, that'd be my way, when somebody comes in and tears up your land. You know, you look at, I mean, the owner of the one, he, he's got no issues with, he said, it's, it's your land, not mine. And he tore up your land while I rented. He doesn't have any issues with the other cases, an owner that, that contracted to have that cleared out of there. If you don't do something, meaning as owners, pretty soon, it just goes up and down the trail. What I will say, since this is hanging out there, there hasn't been any more. We're waiting to see or hear what's going on, so.
Quick comment.
We've got to move on here pretty quick.
Yep. When, when Craig talks about the DNR stepping in and helping us, they'll step in and help us to a point. But this is all new, because we're the regional trail system up here. And to make it happen isn't going to happen overnight. You know how it goes to create new laws and new policy and new programs to, to implement all these things. And that could take up to two years. I told the board, like I said, last in March, we're done. I would like to know this board's opinion. Do we continue in the hopes that the counties are going to step up, or do we stop it? Because in my opinion, we're done. We put up a gate at each end and say, closed. Or we continue. And I know you have to discuss it, but I would like some, it's, as trail administrators, it's hard for me to approve any bills that come in, and I know the inevitable. Why continue?
John?
I heard earlier somebody say you needed ten thousand from each county. What would that do? Would it pay all the old bills?
Ten thousand is a, a high number right now. That, you know, you wouldn't have to write ten thousand dollars tomorrow, that's it.
But if we did, ten thousand from each county would...
That would make us solvent and probably take us to the end of the year in, in legal issues.
So we know what the needs are, at least.
But we would take it as, as we needed it on a, on a request-type basis. And if we didn't use it all, then it carries over to the next year.
Can you just, Jenny? Jenny, what's your...
Well, Brian and I had met, well, it's probably been a month ago, when, when we first started talking about this in Frank's committee reports. And, you know, we had some information in our file, quitclaim deed, for example, and, and some treasurer reports from, from years past. But we were trying to get a good idea of the situation. I made a call to MCIT to, to understand some of the coverage issues. You know, just from a basic review of the quitclaim deed, it does appear that Clay County is a, a one-third owner of the whole.
Fifty-two mile?
Yes, of the fifty-two mile stretch. We also saw indications that the counties had previously contributed lump sums of, of money towards the trail in years past. We saw some indication of a, a previous controversy with a bridge contractor. But honestly, there were more gaps in the information that we had than information. So with somewhat of a starting point.
I can surely supply you with, you know, whatever you might need. Just email me a list, and I can sure get it down to you. I can get you current and past annual treasurer's reports and that sort.
Yeah, and that would be, I think, the starting point. We would have to gather more information and look at the viability of the trail and kind of a cost-benefit analysis to, you know, where we're at and where we would need to be to go forward. But it, it's going to be a task.
Do we have the original JPA agreement?
The joint powers?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Craig has got, I didn't bring a current treasurer's report with, but there is a stated value right now. It's somewhere in the three and a half million dollars, I believe. He has it here. He'll tell you what the, and that's using tax rule assessment numbers.
Mr. Erickson, you've been waiting to talk.
Hey.
Do you want to go to the podium there?
Hey, I got the treasurer's report, my branch.
Sure. Is that something you want to leave here, or?
Yeah, absolutely, if you want. This is their report as a...
Please go to the microphone.
The total value, Kevin, right now is three point three eight six, about three and a half million.
Good morning and thank you. I, and I know of no one else, that we all support the trail. I'm here for two reasons, I think. The reason I'm involved, probably number one, is the two landowners that cut the grass too short and cut too much of it wanted me to get the commissioners to come together with a meeting to come to a solution to stop what no one wants to do. So that's, that's why I'm involved. And I also own land by the trail, so I'm one of the people, too. And I've had a lot of neighbors meeting with land ownership over the years. But Mr. Campbell made a suggestion, or, Everett, I'm sorry, about if there's encroachment issues, the county attorneys could take care of it, in my opinion. If there's drainage issues, the watershed could take care of a violation and process it and take care of it. And ask any questions as I go along, if you've got any questions. And I'll try and make it short, so you guys can get going.
Yeah, we're really behind you.
But I, I, as a taxpayer and a landowner, at this point, I don't want you to give them any money, any, any of my tax dollars or any of the county tax dollars, until they get these problems resolved. From two, nineteen ninety-two to two thousand and six, when it was administrated, at that period, it stayed in the black. And from oh-six and on, there's been a problem. In my opinion, it's a management issue. I mean, Mr. Campbell made reference to how much it could cost, and it could cost a lot. I mean, and these two guys, I, I think everybody wants to get it behind them. The snowmobile clubs seem to be all complimented on a good job. So you've got two snowmobile clubs, a north and a south one, a fertile and a Twin Valley one, that seem to be doing a good job of managing it. And I think we, as a community, want the trail. I think you guys support the trail.
Sure.
We've got to change how it's managed. Thank you. Any questions?
I, I don't, to clarify something, I don't think it's the management problem, so the issues that came up, and they are the boundary encroachment issues. And without, we were fine till then, and we, we, we were in the black, so just to clarify that.
To counter that, I mean, if I, it's a management issue on how you handle the landowners. I mean, I, you just, there's got to be some diplomacy. I mean, I don't, I don't know anything of who, if it's an easement, right-of-way, or fee title, or what it is, the trail will still be there in the future. And however, the management at this point decides how they want to do it. Any questions?
No, I just think we got some homework to do here. So, thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, one thing, and I, probably, we're going to be discussing it here Monday, and we may have to actually send a formal letter to each county as far as actually where we're at here, and the options, so.
Okay, we'll wait to hear from that.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to our agenda addition here. Authorized county owner treasurer to execute contract with Optimum Solutions. So move.
Okay. That's not too...
That's just a renewal, isn't it?
No, actually, this is, I brought, had this on the agenda earlier, and then we kind of decided not to, we tabled it at that time. We're trying to move to a PC version of our current payroll. And we volunteered to beta-test that, but in the process of converting over to that, it's going to cost eleven thousand dollars total. They're not charging us for the software itself, it's just training and conversion costs. And so the Optimum Solutions user group has actually agreed to front the first half of that, pending whether or not we move forward. If we move forward, then Clay County will pay that eleven thousand dollars, and we do have that money in our Internal Service Fund, so it wouldn't, we wouldn't need to add to the budget for that. And so they did approve to do that, so I'm just asking that you allow me to sign the purchase agreement for that PC version software.
It will be a help?
Yes, it makes it a lot easier to email reports, and I haven't seen the product itself, but it just makes it a lot easier and more flexible to work with.
I'll make my motion again.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same?
And I don't know, Brian, did you mention that I wanted to add something else? I just found out about an hour ago that one of my employees is going to retire in June. And so I was hoping to add that, to approve, to fill that point-eight position, because we don't have a board meeting next weekend, we'd like to get somebody on board before, before she leaves, if that's okay.
Typically, I don't like to add on when they're spending, but if it's, if it's a case of having to take the time to find somebody, I...
Right, and it's, it's point-eight possession, it's in the budget currently.
Okay.
And if we wait the two weeks, we're not going to be able to get anybody on board before this...
I'm moving to approve.
Okay. Motion and second, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls most agree.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Committee reports, Frank.
I guess Tuesday, we were all down Barnesville for the Clay Community Health, you know, it was a lively meeting, I guess. I would just say what happens at Barnesville stays at Barnesville. But, I don't know, I guess we just, you know, we're talking about solving the thing, which will will do itself at the end of the year, and moving on with a new four-county cooperative. Also, I attended the Red River Corridor Study put on by AFM Cog at Morehead Tuesday night. There's about a, I don't know, probably about a hundred people there. It's a big study on the corridor. They've got quite a few parks planned, stuff like that. It's really a good plan coming up for the city of Morehead, put up by AFM Cog. Also, I attended a planning commission meeting. I don't know, John, if you want to talk about that or not, where we discussed the Bubble and River Park race track there. And I think Tim put a good plan together, Tim, along with Jenny and with the owner, Kevin Athie. I think they came up with a good plan, and if everybody sticks by it, I think it's going to be a plan, workable solution. I attended that. Wednesday, the Heartland Trail, again, they're moving forward. It sounds like they're going to get some funds to do that, and that looked like a good deal coming up there. Thursday, our AFM Cog meeting, there we had, went over the application that Morehead, this Tiger application they're doing for that underpass in Morehead, the Cheyenne Street Development out there in West Fargo. And we updated the twenty forty long range, long-range plan, got an update on that, so that was my meetings.
Okay, Grant?
I also was at the community health meeting, Frank talked about that. Had economic, Greater Fargo-More Economic Development Corporation Board meeting, and they had some good presentations on some new entrepreneurs working in the Fargo-Morehead and Cassin-Clay County areas. And so that, that was a good meeting. The Heartland Trail meeting we had, we'll be bringing forward a, a list of people to serve on a task force that will be working now on the Heartland Trail. Trail, which will include both, uh, Frank and I, and, uh, that, that's actually showing some progress finally, and, uh, the DNR had, uh, multiple representatives there at our meeting, and, uh, uh, seemed fairly positive, too, that, uh, we will get some money this year for, uh, planning and, and design to move forward with that. Uh, let's see, had a detention advisory meeting, and, uh, uh, things are going well with, uh, detention. Um, there are, there, there are some staffing issues that, uh, the inspection by the Department of Corrections brought forward, and the advisory board approved Steve, uh, making some changes, and so he'll be bringing that forward to our board, uh, sometime in the near future, and, uh, it looks like there is a, a fairly decent surplus, uh, in detention from two thousand and thirteen, so we'll be getting some payback again from those funds, probably around thirty-five thousand dollars, so that was it for me.
Kevin, one more.
Okay.
Uh, on FM Cog, you know, all the things that are going on in Clay County and, and Cass County, uh, I thought the Wade Klein, if he's interested in possibly giving us a presentation, so if we feel that we wanna get updated in what's going on at FM Cog, he's willing to come here and, um, give us a presentation if we feel.
Sure.
Okay, uh, public health meeting in Barnsville, I was at that as well, and I think things are progressing nicely for the, for the four-county, uh, thing, which will start, uh, next January first. Uh, there was, I was at the Buffalo Red River Watershed District Strategic Planning Process on, uh, Tuesday evening last week, um, and the process is just, just beginning. We went through a lot of the history of the, of the watershed, and, and, uh, I, I think that, uh, that's, that's off and running. I had to leave early because we had planning commission here, and as Frank said, uh, the biggest issue there was the hearing we had for the Buffalo Park, uh, Race Park, and, um, you know, maybe we came up with something that's gonna work. Uh, the, uh, the neighbors weren't completely satisfied, and, uh, and, uh, in some ways, uh, the owner, uh, you know, gave up a lot that he would like to have kept, uh, so it seems to me that, uh, that maybe this is the kind of compromise we need. It's much clearer, that's the thing, and there's, uh, there's not all the ambiguity that was before. Uh, seventy-three percent less events than were skid, that were allowed before, so that's a, I, I think that should be a big, uh, benefit to the, uh, to the neighbors there. So anyway, we approved that, uh, the new permit with these new rules, and, uh, it should be much easier to, to enforce and to follow. Uh, I attended a couple of meetings for the Historical and Cultural Society, uh, last week, and one including a board, board meeting, and, um, things are, are moving along there. Uh, the, um, also had a couple of meetings with the Basin Commission, one is executive committee meeting, uh, that was last, uh, Thursday, pretty much routine business, and then yesterday in Grand Forks, had a meeting to begin planning for the, for the next conference, which will be next January, uh, for the Basin Commission, and, uh, got some good ideas, and I think we're off to a good start for the next conference, so.
Right, the only meeting that I had, uh, last week, I was, uh, out, um, and the only meeting I had this morning, we had our PIC meeting, and, uh, we had a couple of, um, different issues, and I left my paperwork in the other, in your office, Brian.
We're gonna go back to them.
Yeah, well, we gotta go back to them, but anyway, there is a couple of changes that, uh, that we're going to be, um, uh, gonna be bringing forward to the board.
And call time?
Yeah, yeah, for, for people who are on-call, um, in, uh, certain areas. We, we already have that for, in the area of unions, and there's some that don't have that, so the on-call issue is there, and then the, uh, issue about what is, uh, you know, what's considered a promotion and, and, uh, that whole deal, and how, how that works with the, with the steps and where they go on, on, with the promotions. Brian, your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got about ten items, I'm just gonna touch on just a couple because we're really short on time. Uh, I did meet with Kathy, Tim, Bruce, in help in regard to the water testing, you guys had asked us to try to, and so Kathy's really looking at that and maybe moving some of the administrative time of one of her per, people that collects the water samples and things, and that's what that was about, to try to cut down on some time on, on what they have, uh, available. Uh, Jenny and I met with, uh, over a recorder issue, that's a legal issue that, uh, we're talking about. Had kind of a serio-, serious personnel issue, I discussed with the chair about that. Um, the, the last one I wanna touch on is the, um, response to Becker County. We had met on a couple of issues, and, uh, Commissioner Everett had met with us in regards to when we met with them over, uh, human service supervision. They do not have a director of their human services right now, they wanted to look at maybe buying some services to us, and, um, we have met, uh, Rhonda went over and met with their staff and their county administrator, and she came back and she felt that it was just too much to take on. For, for a function of, of that magnitude, they need a, a, they need to, uh, appoint one of their supervisors, in our opinion, or, um, hire someone because it would just take too much, around his time. Well, she would be available on a mentoring basis or advisory or, or a shadowing, but, and I, I sent that email back yesterday with, with John's knowledge, uh, we had met afterwards, so just to let the board know on that, and the other little things can, can wait.
Okay.
Chairman Campbell?
Yes.
I have one issue I'd like to bring to the board.
Okay.
Um, just being that we have a, a week off in between now and the next meeting. I was, uh, contacted by, uh, Jason Williams, he's an attorney for Fiddler, who is a distributor of some software that we use in the recorder's office. Um, Fiddler is currently involved in a lawsuit with a company called LPS. LPS is a customer that has purchased our Laredo service here in Clay County for, um, access to public documentation. And so the lawsuit, you know, just to be clear, is between Fiddler and LPS and some alleged, uh, data harvesting that, uh, went on, that LPS went in and unlawfully harvested data from the Laredo system. Um, it is alleged that Clay County is one of the, uh, entities that the data was harvested from, but we are not a, a party to the lawsuit. Uh, this attorney, Mr. Williams from Fiddler, uh, has requested to depose Bonnie Rader, um, in conjunction with the lawsuit, and, um, he specifically called to request, to ask me if, if I was representing Ms. Rader, um, in her con, or in her capacity as previous Clay County recorder, um, and I indicated to him that I would, uh, check with the board and know what the board's wishes were. Uh, so I guess my question to the board at, at this point is if, um, I certainly would be willing to represent her for, uh, deposition purposes, appear with her, take some time before the deposition to speak with her, um, but being that she's not a current employee, that didn't seem to fall, uh, one hundred percent within, uh, you know, normal guidelines, so I would need a consensus from the board to, uh, represent her. Um, being that the deposition and the subject matter of the lawsuit really does fall completely from her previous employment with the county, um, I, I'm willing to do that if, if that's the board's wish.
Definitely, she needs to.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
What obligation would Bonnie have to appear?
Well, she would probably be legally, um, subpoenaed in, so she, it would be a court order that she actually attend and go, if she was served correctly. So she would have an obligation to go if they served her correctly of the time and the place, just like any other person, if you're served with a subpoena, you have to go.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's in the county's best interest to have her represented. Do, do we need a motion to do that, either, or?
Uh, we felt just a consent by you folks.
I concur for it.
I just wanted to.
Yeah.
I didn't wanna just strike out on my own and represent her without the board's approval.
You know, if it was while she was actively employed here or so.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
All right, we're good.